Good morning, I'd like to call Adams County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. Mr. Rafferty, would you lead us in the prayer?
Let us stand up now, yes. O God, we thank you, O God, for allowing us to see another day attended other meetings. And Father, we just ask, O God, that you continue to strengthen our leaders, continue to give them the zeal to run. Father, give them the knowledge, the need for people, and protect them, O God, from any hurt, harm, or dangers in their families. And Father, we just continue to pray for the city, for its county, for the state, for its country, for this world, O God. Father, continue to let peace abide. And Father, we just want to pray for God, for our first responders, our schoolteachers, our children. Father, continue to keep them safe, continue to keep them from hurt, harm, and danger. And Father, we just ask, O God, that you continue to touch the doctors and nurses, O God, that as we battle this COVID pandemic and also enter into another pandemic, Father, we just ask, O God, to continue to keep us safe. Father, continue to bless this county, bless the finances, O God. And Father, continue to just keep us together on one accord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
You would, please, face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, we're going to have an old call. Supervisor Gray.
Yes.
Supervisor Hutchins.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Gaines. County Attorney Scout Slower.
Present.
Chancery Clerk Brandon Lewis.
Present.
Chancery Clerk Paige Dean.
Present.
County Administrator Angie King. This time, we need to approve the minutes from July 2022.
I still don't know.
Motion Assistant Director Hutchins can get a second.
I'm a second, but I ain't getting one, man. I ain't getting one, man.
Thank you, Assistant Director Gray. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I didn't get one, man.
I do not receive any either. And I was having problems with my email. But I got randomly checking this morning, and I was scared I don't see any.
Okay. Well, just put them off.
Okay.
You got to approve your minutes, it's the first time.
How we gonna approve something we ain't get? I don't know what's on them minutes.
That's right. So I said, you got to approve them, you got it.
So could you send them out, and then before we do anything, should we read them again, approve? You might have one of them, they gonna give you a five hundred thousand dollar rebate. We'll prove it, Scott.
I know y'all, we wouldn't have to hide that from you. I know y'all are so anxious to get it to me.
Hey.
Would it legally happen, probably could. If our smallest citizen shall approve those minutes as the first thing he's heard.
Yeah, I would say my first.
I'm all about sending it.
We got.
Hang on, I'm getting to that.
Hey, did you send them out?
No, I did.
Well, no, I ain't got. I wanted you to get mine from me. Let me look again. Brandon, I'm not used to them.
I used to be. Hang on one second. I'll resend them. I've never seen them.
The right-hand man was out.
All right, I just resend them. Yeah, they were sent Thursday. You sent them? You just sent them? Yeah, I sent them on Thursday, but I just resend them too. Okay. I'm standing there, and that's because of Pat's office, we have email.
See, what? I mean, I'm gonna check my motion to approve them and the necessary correction that need to be corrected. Once I read them, and then if there's something that needs to be corrected, we come back and correct, and we can move on with this.
Oh, and I totally, you know, I hate the situation because this is tax day two, so we want to make sure we do everything up enough for our tax purposes. So I hate to be a stickler, too.
All in favor? Uh, sir. Next, we need to approve the documents. Motion Assistant Director Hutchins can get a second.
Mr. President, my only exception is that this self-funded help insurance fund, I see it's on here twice. It's.
One for a hundred dollars and one for four or something. We have a lot of plans, so.
I was just making sure.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
I brought them for the printout, but it missed.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Uh, sir. Next, we need to approve monthly financial reports for Adams County Sheriff's Office.
Still don't know.
Motion Assistant Director Hutchins.
Yes.
Second Assistant Director Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Need to approve monthly financial reports for Chancery Clerk's office. Motion Assistant Director Hutchins, second. Second Assistant Director Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Uh, sir. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Jack Lazarus.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor of being here today. The purpose of my visit today is to attempt to transition the special master in lunacy court from a fee paid per case basis to a salary basis. The reason for this change is.
His letter. He identified himself and what department he comes from, so the people that this is an end will know who he is.
And what your role is with the county?
Yes, sir. My name is Jack Lazarus. I'm the special master in Chancery. I was appointed special master to handle lunacy court here by the late Joseph Carroll back in the eighties. Since that time, I've been handling the majority of our lunacy cases with the great help of the Chancery Clerk and Travis Matt and Major Surcet, who have been great throughout this difficult process. My purpose for being here today is to convert the payment for special master fees from a per-case basis, which we have been doing for quite some time, convert it to a salary basis for the purpose of consistency, uniformity, and predictability. I've met with the Chancery Clerk and Chancellor Ward, and the funds are available in the budget to cover the costs. We're asking that the special master be paid $2,001.50 per month or $25,800 per year on a monthly basis. We have four doctors. We have four attorneys who help us. But we only have two special masters. And I handle virtually all the cases. With this change, we'll be available to do all the cases for Adams County, which, as y'all know, we have quite a large number of cases. Our county is second in the state in the number of actual lunacy cases that we have. Only one county has more than we do. And it's an important function of the Chancery Clerk's office and the Chancery Court. I'm honored to do it, and I'm asking that the pay be converted so it can be uniform, consistent, and predictable with our experience. That's all I have.
Uh, Mr. President, I got a question. So, County Administrator, you hear what he said. So that mean that nothing gonna change, the pay gonna change, and we just want to get it done differently, but the pay gonna stay the same?
It's actually, Supervisor Gray, slightly more money than what we're spending right now.
Well, you didn't mention that part, that's why I'm asking. Because you made it seem like everything gonna be the same. You just want to take it from a salary base to a hundred and fifty dollars. So what is the increase amount?
I don't know. We call it, and that's the reason why I'm here today. We never know how many cases we're gonna have.
All we can do is put that in writing and pick it up during both times.
I mean, we have committed a proposal.
Everybody's been submitting to the person that's.
But it is slightly more than what we're spending down. Now, here's the thing about it. This will be the same regardless of the number of cases, whether there's more or less. The salary for the special master would be the same. It wouldn't go over or down based on the number of cases, which it does now. We never know. Sheriff Patton will say, some weeks we have three or four, some weeks we have none. But we never know exactly how many cases we're gonna have.
Let's just say we have a bunch of time.
Yeah, so you need to make sure Angie King gets a copy of that request.
I'll do that.
So she can consider it and do the budget.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lieutenant. Uh, city government business, if any.
Mr. President, again, I have made an error. I was supposed to put this young lady on the agenda. Oh, it's Rhonda right here on the agenda to introduce herself and just tell us a little bit about herself. I mostly got to leave out of here before ten o'clock with this board commission. I would like to pick her up and let her go on, introduce herself, and whatever she got to tell us. I think whatever she got to say would benefit not only Adams County, but Natchitoches.
No, there's no city or county business. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
You wouldn't go to the bike place?
Good morning. My name is Rhonda Davis Page. I'm a resident of Natchitoches. I was raised here, but I've been gone for about twenty years. I'm moving back here. I work as a federal contractor. My specialty is in healthcare. One of the reasons why I've decided to move home is to improve healthcare here. So I am, you know, I've spoken to Keith, I've spoken to Lauren. I'm just available if there's any assistance you need in working with the health departments or with the federal public health centers. I currently am the area coordinator for Region Four, which is all of the South. I work with the CDC Foundation. So in the past couple of years, we have been providing workforce capacity to the state of Mississippi. I had about forty employees supporting the local health departments around the state. So we've been addressing emergency response for COVID. But also, there are multitudes of different types of activities that go on related to healthcare. So I just, I've spoken, like I said, with Keith and with Lauren. I'm open to support Adams County and the city of Natchitoches in any way that I can on any activities. There was a lot of deaths in Natchitoches over the past couple of years. And so if there's any guidance or any connections you guys need into different federal agencies, again, I'm here to help in any way that I can. So, thank you all.
Thank you, my.
Rhonda Davis Page.
President.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will you all give out COVID stats? Will you help there?
Okay, what I do is I'm on federal level. So we make sure that the health centers, the health departments have a supply of vaccinations. I coordinate with state health staff as to whether or not you want to have activities. So if you want to have vaccination activities, you want to have specialized activities for like children, you know, it's pretty critical right now to get children vaccinated. We work with, making sure adults and seniors receive the services that they need. As well, the Jefferson Comprehensive Health Center, I was one of the people on the team who came here and certified the health center. I would love to see a larger health center in Adams County, particularly for the uninsured and unserved. A lot of times I talk to people, they say they don't go to doctors and Natchitoches, they don't have a doctor in Natchitoches. Not quite understanding that. But my goal would be to make sure there are available primary care institutions to serve all people within the county. So what I do is I coordinate with your state leadership or like the health center itself, and make sure those services are provided in the area.
Okay.
Thank you, my own.
Uh, Ms. Page, on your way out, we got Secretary Rodette. Could you leave your contact information with her?
Okay.
Don't somebody else want?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, this time, we're gonna move into the tax objections. And we need to find that the publication of the tax objections was timely made.
The publication right here went out on July thirteenth and July seventeenth. So timely with the statutes. It's gonna be, what, ten days before the August first meeting, which it is? So we can continue on with jurisdictions. Any motion?
Yeah, I need a motion to open the meeting to a public meeting regarding tax objection.
First, you need a motion to find that it's, the publication's due again.
Motion Assistant Director Hutchins.
Yes.
Second Assistant Director Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Now I need a motion to build to a public meeting for objections. Motion Assistant Director Hutchins. Second Assistant Director Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Is anyone here present for an objection to their tax assessment?
Any taxpayers with objections? Any taxpayers with objections? There's no one here. Clerk, you didn't receive any timely file?
And I just confirm that we have not received any up until nine o'clock this morning. No objections mailed in to us. Correct. Or.
Can you get the motion to close?
Uh, actually, I had a question. Larry, did you check on the loss prevention? Did y'all get, give them the exemption? Can you check on that?
I'll check on it. You better go to the loss prevention, right?
Right. That was something I put their title to it. I sent something over to Peggy, but I don't know if we ever talked back about it.
I thought so. I think she gonna come back in a little later and talk with you about it.
Okay, we'll keep that. Taxpayer open minutes. Yeah, have anything else?
Got your motion to close here. Motion Assistant Director Gaines. Second Assistant Director Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. This time, I'll need a motion to adopt the tax rule.
With the, all right, go ahead.
Motion Assistant Director Hutchins can get a second. Second Assistant Director Gaines, any discussion?
Yeah, with the exception of that loss prevention. Is there any other tax?
Um, I just want to bring to the board attention the certificate that we did receive.
What's that?
And we did get a certificate from the Department of Revenue.
Yes.
Just want to re-get out real quick.
Oh, okay.
That's all I want to do.
Yeah, this is, this is your main question. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Actually, is what we want.
Good morning, Board President. Mr. Mayor said, Board Supervisor, I'm Larry Hughes, Adams County tax assessor. I just want to bring to the board attention that we did see our certificate from the Department of Revenue. And with this certificate, it's based saying that the Missouri Department of Revenue had received it. They accounted a recount for the real personal assessment role and above the name, county number filed in 2022. To the best of my knowledge, in the league, conservative corporations and supplemental role reflecting the invitation to constitute the minimum that Eric Hughes, assessor of said county, has not any default with respect to making a thought said assessment role was the board supervisor and to his discretion made any of kinds and paid salary of the assessor. So all this was done on July the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two by the Department of Revenue.
All in favor?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, sir.
It's been quite some time since we hadn't had objections.
You saying that you ready that they said they was gonna cut your salary? Man, I'll get that.
We got downstairs.
All right, we're gonna move into departmental reports.
Good morning, yours.
Good morning.
I'm Anna Fales, the director of the United One Dispatch. Okay, with the month of calls that we had for July, the Natchitoches Police Department had one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine calls. Adams SOA had seven zero five. Fire Department had thirty-eight. Also, I'm the place proud for myself, Matt James, and Rhonda Grayson for October twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth to the conference and the.
Listen to that, you might have that.
Yeah.
The three of you, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, DeWanna Grayson, the amount is four sixty-one sixty-five. Matt James, the amount is two thirty. And that fails. I guess that those is two thirty. These have been signed. You heard the request. So, and most of my supervisor Gaines can get a second.
Second.
Second Assistant Director Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Also, I'm asking for the request of a new hire, the David Johnson.
That is a new hire, telecommunicator, hourly rate twelve dollars, annual rate twenty-four nine sixty. You heard the request on this, fellas? Motion Assistant Director Hutchins.
Second.
Second Assistant Director Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Martin. I'm a participator at Adams County Board of Supervisors. The first thing I would like to spread approximately since we have approval to advertise for the showers for the April.
Motion Assistant Director Hutchins.
Second.
Second Assistant Director Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Can I briefly look off to the board that there are no bids for the trucks for the Adams County Sheriff's Office? And talking to the state audit, they did say that we would need to read advertisements. If no one bid, and there was someone that wanted some people, they would pay to re-advertise. Only other way that you could go ahead with the purchase is if it was considered an emergency purchase. I'm not exactly aware of how many vehicles are in the fleet. And that's a question that I asked them. He was like, if basically, they basically, it's on a basic account by account basis. You don't, you know, it's up to the board how many vehicles are considered a full trip. So the big thing is trying to see here if you want to go ahead doing an emergency purchase. I did reach out to Wes at Curtis Auto World, who is one of the vendors we have for the state contract. And he stated that he didn't have any vehicles available. He didn't know when any were gonna be available. The only two vehicles he has are two GMC crew cab four-wheel drive trucks, white trucks. And the cost of the forty-two, forty-five five twenty.
So they're valid, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know we have to do the advertisements and take bids and everything. But what about the enterprise deal?
That was, that was the lease. The only thing with that, like me and Scott have discussed that, if it's considered an emergency purchase based on the need for them for the vehicles, you can, you know, start emergency purchase tax, yes. But the board will still have to prove the lease through.
Yeah, that's the only question that we had, and I think it's, we're pondering that the way the market is, was that it was different than the state contract pricing.
Right.
But, I mean, it was about ten grand, a truck war. But I think that's the way the market is looking.
Because even with them, nothing is available right now. They are, they did say that some of us are on the ground. But as far as them, this could happen because they don't actually have the vehicles in their position. They would have to give the vehicles. I know some are being manufactured, but we wouldn't get them for the state contract price. But it is like a ten thousand dollar increase in the vehicles. But they're like forty-one thousand dollars a week.
So let me just, so can you reach out of this folder to see if we can get some vehicles? Because, you know, in my opinion, if you lease a vehicle and you're paying all this finance for these over the years, I think it's because they were just paid for them, even though they're higher. If you will come out cheaper to just pay cash and purchase some vehicles. Save on the financials. Save on all the financials. And if you lease a vehicle, you're paying all this finance charges for vehicles that you don't, you're not on. So I just think you need to go out and just search. Even, but even with the forty-one thousand dollars, it still will be more than leasing that vehicle for five years. Way more. So I'm just, I don't understand it. So I'm wondering if we can purchase something. Would they let us purchase, or would they not let us purchase something?
They only do a lease program, but they share in the equity of the vehicle. So what they want the counties to start doing is leasing for a shorter period of time. There's like a sweet spot, so to speak, of when you can sell a vehicle. Because you typically can buy as a governmental entity cheaper than the rest of the folks. So they want, just like Enterprise can buy cheaper than, because of the amount of money they buy. And so there's a period of time that you have where you can sell a car. And I hate to say turn product, because you don't turn product. But you generate enough revenue, and then you use that revenue to buy your own fleet. And that's the program that they set. I don't know the math on it, but I'm not, I'm a lawyer, not good at math, so.
We, the math is that we financed it over five years. You pay finance for five years. When you could play, we just pay cash, just like when you all purchase your vehicle, we pay cash for that vehicle. Superintendent, where you pay? And it was done.
But, you know, that is being said, and that is true. The only thing I'm looking at at this point, you know, we got equipment on it. Never have, never got it. I mean, we don't have trucks, we don't have it. It's a shortage of vehicles right now. And I mean, we try to get parts right now for different things. You don't have, they don't have no exact time, not even when vehicles or tractors or equipment be ready to part. So that is the only issue that I see. Whether I have a problem, I'm all for buying a vehicle. But when you don't have any vehicles available to get, then that's a problem. I don't know how I can just bring that. I know I tell, you know, move around, you see stuff. I mean, you know, you're that administrator. You see, it is so hard to get equipment, so hard to get vehicles. It's vehicles that's made, and they got a lot full of vehicles that don't have chips to go in. And I think we ought, what, two trucks for the road department almost a year ago had to see them, two dump trucks had to see them. So that's just one of the things that come into mind that I, I just, you know, just say that we need to think about that, too. Even if a family lost their contract, which would be good to purchase. But if you can't find them, then what?
Well, if they contract wise.
Yeah, but you can't find them, period.
Right. She said it was some vehicles for forty-one thousand. So. Well, the vehicles that they're, the vehicles that they're requesting is around fifteen hundred, crew cab four by four. That's the vehicle that basically the Enterprise is seeing the prices went up. Now, I don't know if it's another vehicle that they would be willing to go with. I'm not exactly sure of that. But as far as the specific vehicle that they're looking. But as far as the specific vehicle that they're looking for is around fifteen hundred four-by-four crew cab. And that's the one, I even, you know, got online and just went to different dealerships. Nobody has that vehicle, now they have crazy, they have different forms called around fifteen hundred. But it's not that specific crew cab four-by-four.
Uh, I kind of agree with supervisor Gaines, let me see, uh, right now, things are not normal. And, uh, till we get back to normal, then we got to do what we got to do. Because, uh, if we don't, probably going to lose these vehicles and, and, and not going to be able to get no vehicles. Uh, I think the federal government is working on trying to, uh, get chips or whatever the case may be. But until we get back to normal, we just got to do stuff we don't usually do.
When do we have, uh, you said it's non-available?
Now, okay, Enterprise, they, they have direct contact with the manufacturers. As far as I know, from what you and I, me and Scott both discussed that with CJ. Um, he's saying that they do have so many on the ground that they may not be in the state of Mississippi. They may have to go get those vehicles. But he also stated that there are going to be maybe additional eighteen that are being produced. But they have direct contact with the manufacturers, which I, you can, you can say is an advantage. But that's the price that they're getting them at, it's the forty-one thousand. And they can't, we, we asked about giving them for the contract price, but being that these are not going through an actual vendor under the state contract, it's going to be a set rate, which is the forty-one thousand.
We just going to have to do this as an emergency purchase, because if not, we're going to lose those vehicles.
Sheriff, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I just wondered, hey, a couple of things, Chuck, he has, Ms. Martin has done a great job with trying to deal with this whole situation. But I think there's still left, a lot left out there with Enterprise that is really not coming to the table. Now, when I talked to Enterprise, they sent me, they sent me the email and the breakdown. And I told them, I say, whatever we normally budgeted for to purchase vehicles, I'd like to see how many vehicles we could possibly get, just for my knowledge, to see how the lease compares with the purchase. And he was telling me, and I got it right, that from the five vehicles that the board normally purchased, he said you can get eighteen on lease. And Scott was exactly right when he said that the bagging and the leases get rid of early on, where you're not paying as much as if you look at our maintenance, that you're paying on the old vehicles. But you have to give a process time to work in order to do that. Now, what we keep shooting ourselves in the foot, and when I say ourselves, I mean the county as a whole, is two years in a row, we completely missed the state bidding process. And that's why this, this, this extra money is, is coming. It's because, you know, we come and I change, correction me from wrong. But if anyone about to come in now, October, it's about to be a whole nother budget season for the state. So we have to get it within those timeframes in order to get state contract prices. And she is absolutely right, you're not going to get it right now, because truth be told, that, that deal closed right now. So I thank you all for doing that, because we probably have a couple, that is coming out of, out of, out of Hoover County shortly in the next few weeks, that won't, you know, even have a spare vehicle on the, I think we got one spare.
How many, how many vehicles in that inventory?
We have one spare right now.
How, how many vehicles is in, in inventory, is what I'm asking.
You guys, can you guys see?
I believe it's forty-six.
Okay, because the inventory list I got, see, we got sixty.
But we need to get you.
We need to make, we need to update the inventory list.
How about this?
We need to update it.
That is no problem. We can make sure that happens, because again, I said a couple of minutes ago, that we sold several vehicles.
We sold them and they're off. We still got sixty in there.
You shouldn't have six.
I, I was told by Corbett that the last six I saw would not come off inventory till August third.
Could've been for minutes.
For August what?
The third.
That's because.
She had already gotten her.
Mr. President, the only thing we got to do, provide us with an updated list. But we can. Yeah, we can move along, we can, we ain't got.
Okay, that's fine, we, we can get you to update the inventory list, that's no problem. Because whatever that reason is, I know, I know our person coming here told y'all certain vehicles have come off. But we will get you all an updated inventory list, that is not a problem.
Let me, let me ask a question. Uh, I don't know if anybody got an answer to this, but everywhere we go and everything is going up, what, what make we think that the vehicle is not going to go up? Everything else is going up.
They are, they are, they are absolutely going up.
I mean, everything going up. All the stores.
Everything.
So this was five vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Is, is the availability there for all the uptidings that those vehicles need?
We got the holes in them.
Now, the biggest thing is, um, getting the vehicles to up till it would be different.
The up till is different, and, and yes, that is different.
But is the stuff a pay?
Yes, we, we got.
That the vehicle can be road ready and we're not paying for a vehicle that we can't put on roads because we can't get upsets for it?
They just sent us the holes this morning, and they, the stuff didn't go. She hadn't seen it, because it, it just came in this morning.
Yeah.
It did, and I can forward it to you right now, but it came in before we came over here. So, yes.
Mr. President, uh, I, I, I didn't really want to say that, but it, uh, that is the same concept, um, that I was trying to get the board to see a while back. People thought I wanted a new vehicle, it wasn't about me getting a new vehicle, but, uh, once you get so many miles on a vehicle and we can sell the same vehicle I'm riding around in for more money than we bought it for. And we could turn around on the state contract and get another cheaper vehicle. That's all I was saying, and that's, that's what they, what I'm doing. You keep it for so long, for some reason, used trucks is almost higher than a new truck. And you get rid of them and you get your new, you get your new truck.
But the key again is catching when you in that, that period, you got to catch it. When they open state bid, contract, uh, state bids, because it's, it's not open very long. Am I wrong on that? It's not open very long, and so additional costs come, we don't do it within that timeframe.
Yeah, motion by supervisor Hutchins, second my supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Uh, there's like some certain language you adopt for the emergency, which y'all should be familiar with, I repeat, if you're not, but you're adopting that language of emergency.
Even though we carried the motion, because you took the price and what we talking about in there with it? Like, yo, you say forty-one now, right?
The purchase price of forty-one.
I don't want to be in that figure.
Yeah.
I brought the quote.
But you got to outfit them too.
I don't have time out, everybody's time out. Basically, price will be going, well, I'm not talking about what we going.
The, the price of each vehicle is forty-one thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars.
Forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand five, forty-one?
And those vehicles are on the market right now?
Is that a door or a, they can't get them, uh, we probably, I know the last time Scott and I talked to him, which was about a week or so ago, he was saying that the longest it would be a month before we would actually go, because they would have to get the vehicles. But the upending would be, uh, a, a different timeframe. But they are, they are.
Yeah, y'all found that the opportunity to give competitive bidding would be detrimental to the interest of the county. I think that's accurate, because these vehicles probably won't be available three weeks from now. Quite frankly, we didn't get a bid last round, so.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So, before I start my report, I want to say something, I want to try to catch your gravity. As I left the office today, I was hiring three more advanced E M T employees. And when I get those three trained inside, I'll probably be back to better level than I was prior to COVID. It is a huge, huge push, it's been a lot of effort on our part. And I am very proud to say that. So before I start my report, I want to give good news right off the bat. We had three hundred eighty-four requests in July, uh, for nine-one-one, two hundred forty-five of those were resulting in transports, the rest were refusals. We had a compliance in the city of eighty-nine percent and a compliance in the county of eighty-eight percent. Our total EMS requests for July, one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine, and that's all, all lines included. So that'd be four in one, six priority folders. Uh, one hundred twenty-four patients refused. We had thirteen no-patient contacts, which we assume are false calls, they're just, there, there's no patient there when we get there. And then fifteen canceled value of call or law enforcement prior to arrival. Uh, two hundred and forty times, we had multiple units on the same call in the county for the month. Uh, we flew three straight from the field for higher level of care by partnering up with the helicopter and having them intercept us. Uh, several times in a month, to cover this extra volume, we had seven advanced life support units and four B O S. That's not, I mean, two B O S life support units running in the county. Uh, that's, that's pretty huge. Like I said, staffing goes up, we're able to expand and do things a lot, a lot better. Uh, some of those hours were my hours, I spent seventy-four on the unit this month, just making sure that we had quick responses and making sure we could serve the citizens. Had one crew member out in July with COVID. Um, proud to report they're right back in the business, uh, with only mild symptoms. Um, we did hire two new EMS drivers, that's, uh, Nick Hagermeyer and Bailey Wolf. They'll both begin their National Registry Responder training this month, so we'll start advancing them through the service criteria levels. And more long, we'll have them up at the basic level and, and if they choose, push them through paramedic. We continue to have a thirteen thousand dollar signing bonus for paramedics. We're going to keep that in place until I feel comfortable, and that ain't going to happen for a long time. I like adding extra. Uh, and then we once again put out, uh, eleven thousand in med retention bonus and forty-five hundred in basic bonus to make sure that our current staff remained engaged and remained happy to be employed with us. Uh, we did have a cardiac arrest aid, which I happen to be a partnership in. Uh, the call resulted in having four paramedics at that, at that, that patient side, and she is still breathing and living today, three weeks post-event. So, does the board have any questions for me?
No questions. Please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, Mr. President, this, this question is for you and Brad. Uh, I made it just me, but every time I tell them new, they talking about how numbers are increasing and going up everywhere. But we don't even talk about it around here no more, so if the numbers are going up, if, if, if some current concerns out there that the public need to know about, somebody got to see it, that's all I'm saying.
So, the data that's showing right now, where you're getting your spots and you're getting your increases, the version that's out right now of the COVID virus is a much more mild version. You also have the advancement of the medical science that's able to treat those versions. So what you're finding is where you've got a greater population of increase, you also have a reduction in the mortality and morbidity rate of that increase. Because the science behind the medicine is now treating that more aggressively and better. And you're finding yourself able to be at home, you have less occurrence of folks having to go into the hospital to receive treatment through long-term care from physicians and nurses versus they're able to take prescribed medications from the pharmacy at their house. In three to five days, those symptoms are starting to subside, and they're actually able to return into the public and into the environment. Uh, once you get that version, the likelihood of you getting it again within six to twelve months is very small. So while it was a small, uh, you know, a small window of its, of sickness, of, of your time of being ill, there was a better potential to treat it. And then there's less likelihood of recurrence in that for the next six to twelve months. And that's determined by the person's, their own body, their own D N A and their own genetic makeup. Some people carry those antibodies for a longer window of time than others do. But the average is running to point six in twelve months. So while you're seeing a small increase in areas, you're seeing a reduction in that, the, the real-time impact as far as like deaths occurring from it and a, an ease of ability to treat it versus the previous versions, we didn't know a lot. And by the time you spun up, you were already behind the eight ball. So with these, people are more aware, which means they're reporting to their healthcare provider quicker, they're getting on those medications quicker, and they're able to reverse the symptoms quicker. And that's, that's reducing your overall morbidity and mortality with that, with those events.
Well, thank you for that information, but still, it did mean, but, you know, I, I, I've still been wearing my mask from day one and, and I have to wear it because, uh, uh, my momma said when you have your mask on, you can't go in the house. If I wanted to take it off, I couldn't take it off. But my only concern to you, when, when you don't talk about something, and if people start relaxing, start getting back to normal, and start having all these big heartaches and all that, like, all this can went away, but it's still here. And then all of a sudden, we have, uh, everybody getting it.
Yes, sir.
You know, but I went to a class reunion, and they say, well, so many people, they got it. Because we thought, when they thought it was gone, so they weren't protecting themselves and, and other people. So we still need to find a way to get the message out to, to, to the community that they need to still protect themselves.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, board, everyone. Robert Brad, Adams County, D M A Director. Uh, got a couple things this morning to caveat, uh, what channels and E M R. Uh, we're, we're staying on top of it, uh, but like I say, there, there's a difference between the category not under any declaration of things of that nature. Uh, so our, uh, uh, resources are limited, as far as that, the department health, they do send out reports, but we don't get those report when they send those out. Uh, with that being in mind, the same thing as, you know, when we request for mask. Uh, right now, uh, we can't get the K ninety-five of those type masks, uh, from the state, uh, because they're from declaration. And most of the people that, that have them, are there, uh, some counties, they've already used them. Uh, so with that being said, you know, I know a lot of you constituents are asking for those, uh, but we don't have them right now. We do have just a non-search for mask. And, but I know a lot of people want that extra protection, so we may have to just, for now, go out on the, uh, the economy by their own, uh, for right now, on there.
Can I ask you something?
Go ahead.
Who have you requested the mask from?
Through the emergency department, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're the one that's over the mask now, because the M E M A, uh, when the declaration, uh, deceased governor, uh, took the declaration away, all that, that, those resources went to the Department of Health. So the Department of Health is running those now, and with Department of Health, they're only going, uh, this priority list. You know, first responders, nursing homes, so they got priority. So when we request for big community type masks, they're not doing those no more.
Okay, you know, if you would tell me how many masks you need, um, the state health department, Dr. Ed, his group has masks, but also the federal qualified centers give them masks. And I know through the Office of Minority Health, they do have some specific masks for rural areas, particularly if it's from the county agents or the sheriff's department. If you would tell me how many you think you need, I can talk to Region Four to see what's available in their supply to send for you from the region office rather than the state office.
Okay, I can give you after this.
Okay, thank you.
That'll work. We'll do that. Uh, like I said, I want to shower, be in everything, they turned on the person, and she's working that issue, trying to get showered. Hopefully, we can try to get some bids in, try to get those started, because what I'm trying to do is we want to try to get a bid and try to get with M E M A, see if they offset and go in half on, on purchase of those. At least pay for half of the showers, because we used it before I ran it up. So that's my attempt at trying to get that done. So whatever the cost is, we try to get fifty percent reverse back to the county on that.
What was the estimate on that?
Uh, I don't know, one guy somewhere, you, you looking at now, uh, probably you're going to have pretty between fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Couple of tears of wood up, concrete, where everything just going up. You know, so, uh, so hopefully, if we get it in, get the bid, I can get with M E M A, and they, if they bless it off, you know, they'll at least get money back to the county about the day.
And that's for showers, right, Mr. Brad?
Right, yeah, they have two females, two males, uh, one ADA, make sure that, because they're going to be an ADA compliant.
Right.
So we have two male and female ADA, but we get wheelchair accessible, so we won't get into the liability zone now.
Okay.
Uh, the last thing is I'll request for travel for our flood plain management training, uh, on the seventh, eighth, September. Uh, in the Luxon, Mississippi, as part of our community rate system, uh, pertaining to the national flood insurance programs. President, uh, Bittles has that request.
Your travel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do have a request for Brad here. Most of my super brothers and sisters can't even say it. Second, my super brother Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes up.
Okay. Also, if y'all got any community events in your districts, you know, involving a lot of people that need cooling fans and stuff like that. We do have all that available. So we do have four in the county. So if you need them, just request them, and we can get them out to you.
Okay, what did you said you have?
We have cooling fans.
Okay.
Big fans, anything you need, you need, y'all can get them. Get them to your district, let them know we get that too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken.
Morning. First, just want to ask everyone to have Donald Johnson, he's our Keenston Volunteer Chief in the prayers. He was arrested at Leekburg Saturday for a parent hold attack. And he said he's doing a lot better, so he might be coming home tomorrow. My dog's been with us about thirty years volunteering. But he's been a big plus for, for the county. So I asked everyone to keep him in the prayers. Also, fire hydrants, which I'm on Dunbar. They said at one fourteen, they're pretty much with, walking the line across over that area. Because they said they don't really want to put anything in about the yard, because there could be some problems. So we kind of crossed over that little area. And actually, need to have one at the front of Dunbar at the beginning. Because closest hydrant will be at the church right down on Oak Road, Keenston. And right, right, the store way, and the other one will be at Country Square, about five hundred and some feet down. Country Square, those local hydrants at the beginning of Dunbar and Blair Court. So we can put them down in the middle of it, but we need some of it to get it also. And we're trying to see about sandpiper, at the end of sandpiper, that they said they had a four inch line down there. And on Red Loop by White Oak. So that's all I have for it.
Thank you, Darren.
We did have a meeting with the city and we planned to, we was gonna get a committee to work with this fire protection and all this. To me, I, I would hope and pray that we continue the interlocal agreement with the city to provide fire protection to our citizens in the county. That's Plan A. If Plan A don't work, have a Plan B. Or the plan that we wanted to go to before that, we need to start back looking into that, that's just my opinion.
All right. I've been already looking at numbers and the plan I had before, still have that in place. But I think we need to have, like I said, the board, myself, and Brad, we're gonna have a meeting before we even do anything. The kind of stuff we, you know, we're gonna plan on doing, or what we, you know.
No, the plan is, I hope that we continue interlocal agreement with the city. But if that don't work out, we need our own plan. That's all I have.
We got a plan, so just a matter of sitting there and talking about it.
Yeah, Mr. President, whatever. I was gonna do it in my report, I was writing it down. I know when I first came, we was talking about, I don't know if this is a plan, you was talking about maybe putting the fire departments on the north end, the south end, to help go down with the insurance of the constituents and everything. And so it'll be a closer gap, that you can be able to save more lives, maybe save houses and stuff like that. So I, I'm not sure exactly what plan, but I was writing it down in my report to do it at the end of the day, but you might be gone. So if you would, is, is that the same thing you're talking about with the fire stations? Okay. Okay. Yes, sir. All right. But I, I give it forward, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Some of the committee members have spoken to me, also, Mr. Darren Smith. I know they're supposed to put all this committee together. Can you get with the mayor, because I know you have your list, and there I have his list of who's gonna be on these committees?
Scott's got both of them.
Okay, both of those lists. And make sure that someone, go ahead and give them a contact on when they will be meeting, because they don't know when they'll be meeting, so.
We just got the list filed out, that's right.
Right, so that's what they've been talking about, when meeting, okay.
Yeah, but I was saying, probably meet with the county before we meet with the city. You know, have a plan going in. That's what I was saying.
Well, Mr. President, I, I just pray and hope that we continue the interlocal agreement right now. And if the interlocal agreement follow through, then we plan on Plan B. But right now, we just need to continue what we're doing.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe that plan is pretty thorough. And there should just be some changes as to the increases that we're experiencing right now as to what those buildings would be. I believe those plans are pretty thorough in the past, weren't they?
I'm looking at, I know one of them, they were talking about that we need a certain percentage. But you're looking at, they are the primary fire protection in the county. So anything that goes on, they're gonna be called first anyway. So those numbers gonna hurt us regardless. Because all, like I said, in all that goes in the contract, we provide water supply. We help out for fighting fire, but once that call come out, they call in the county. So we gonna lose that anyway, lose that battle anyway for, for numbers to go out of the county. Because anything they call, they call in the first, because that's the way it's set up. So, and then, you know, we losing money that we can keep for ourselves. Like I said, if the volunteers, it's hurting up, because we can't really get anything, because all the money's going across the street.
We're spending money that we can't spend on ourselves. I don't think there's any savings. But this is why we got a group of the people that have these knowledge on these things. And we're doing it well in advance, it's not coming up until next year. But that's why we went ahead and talked about it and bring it up to get this conversation going so that it's civil. And we do something that's good for everybody, matches in Adams County. Which I think the plans that we've seen, we definitely can do, it could be a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, see, that's why I was saying, we, we, you're a person, because like, you don't want to get your game plan away on certain things, you know, before you go and talk to the city and all that. So I think we need to talk amongst ourselves first.
I mean, you all can do that once you all find out who are the committee members. Another thing I would likely see you all do is, when you all come up with these figures, please take, please take in consideration of how many calls are being made in the city and how many calls are being made in the county.
Oh, yeah, we, we have all that. I have someone working on that, because again, if you come across, not fires, we used to be firefighters, but you're leaving now. Fire forces, we can pull all that, from the calls and all that, from that. And what type of calls and those kinds of situations also. So like I said, the thing is, I just want to make sure that we all on the same page before we go, you know, talking across the street in the city.
I'm, I'm gonna add this, you know, that's what they, because I was here when, when I first got in, looked at it. You know, that was old Mayor Bush Brown, I'm gonna be honest with you, that was his thing. Because we pay a half million dollar fire truck, and we giving six hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars. We the only county probably in the state that's doing it. Everybody laughing us when we say we doing it. They're like, man, y'all gotta be a fool. It's not about the calls, because it's, if a call come in, the same amount of fire people on that truck are responding to a grass fire or a house fire. It's nothing that's true. So what we need to do is we need to just make a call, because what we're doing is we're being, you know, I'm not saying we being robbed, but we need to be good stewards of our money. Because our volunteers, those ladies and gentlemen, they show up at those scenes. I ain't getting paid all time of night, working hard, and, you know, they don't have the proper gear. To me, that's a no-no. And, you know, and it's hard for me to tell them guys that go fight a fire in your districts when they're not protected. You know, and, and, and that's a no-no, we, you know. The Bucks, we got to stop here, we got to get those guys what they need. They, they don't have fire trucks to fight, that's why we haul them water. You know, some of the fire trucks we get from that, from the, the Forest Commission, if you pay a hundred dollars, you gonna get what you get. A hundred dollars gonna get you three thousand dollars engine work trying to fix it, because that's what they turn in. So I think when we put this committee together, we need to look at, you know, the fairness of it, you know, of, of, of that, and what we have done, because like I say, I, you know, I, I'm all for fire protection if they're gonna do it. But if I give you a half million dollar fire truck, you know, you should cut up some slack to, to, to allow each fire department to be uniform. Because a volunteer and a regular firefighter, there's no difference, just the name. They still fight fire, so they should have the same equipment as those guys in the city. One only getting paid, the other one not. So when we approach this, that's what we're gonna look at this year. And like I said, we had those plans of putting those fire department in the one in the north and one in the south to help everybody. Because, you know, I live in District Five, you know, I want my fire protection going out to. You know, that's what, that's, that's making it fair to everybody. And, you know, I think we'll get a better approach with that. So going forward, we can look at that, uh, superdising grade. I ain't saying stop it now, but we need to negotiate that, you know, to be able to help the other fire departments out too.
Let me ask you a question. When you come to our volunteer, I know some of them certified, right?
Yeah, level one, yeah.
Same training. They'd be regular firefighters going through fire.
Right.
So I'm gonna think they missing this too.
Well, for them, yeah, because like I said, the gear has, has a state, a life stage on it also. And this one they have now is pretty much at that end. I mean, and for them, and if we are talking about maybe doing our own, we gonna have to upgrade it. The gear, trucks, and all that. And like you were saying about the money, you know, if we do decide, we need, I would cut it in half or something. Because again, we have to wait, wait, because we can't have these volunteers to keep coming in, and we don't have nothing to put on. We put this, some of the older stuff we have, I mean, somebody could get hurt. Because it don't take much with the heat. I mean, the gear's designed to go inside a building.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna wait. I hope I be part of it. The reason, because Adams County is kind of unique from a whole lot of other places, because we have one municipality and one county. And a lot of those other people have multiple municipalities that they kind of serve. So you can't say, well, it ain't fair. When, 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 you know, when they up there, you got seven or eight municipalities inside one county, we just have one. So they don't know our situation. We know our situation.
Big Bird pretty much set up like us. They are, they have city fire department, they gonna go past the county line, they got volunteer that handles the outside of county.
Yeah. Just to, I just would probably start calling some committees' task force, because this board ultimately hasn't, don't give any authorization for the committee, any special powers or anything like that. Ultimate C S O is gonna become before this board as a whole.
That's right.
And I just want to make, yeah, people, but I, but I want to make the public aware, because when you say committees, that triggers a bunch of stuff. It's really just a task force where we're discussing public opinion. Just, I guess the narrative, we should publicize.
Mr. Smith, in our volunteer firefighters are fighting fires in cities also, right, or just the county?
When they call from U T A, they call the volunteers, either stand by, or they'll come and help with water supply, and the ones that want to fight fire, they can fight fire. Because I know with the hotel, they came down to the hotel, down sixty-one, right across where, uh, across from Highland, with the oil company there. They've been there, they came to stand by when they had the fire, over on Pearl Street. So when they call, they come to stand by, or call to fight fire, they come fight fire. You know, even other surrounding counties that have been calling them also, for the use of trucks, manpower and all that too. So they do, like I said, they come out, and they don't ask questions, they don't fuss, complain. Whatever they have to do, they do. They get their twelve hours, well, twenty-four hours of class a year from the state. That's what's required from them, and they do more than that also. So that's why I always ask, you know, about getting them equipment and all that, because he got it dedicated. Like I said, Donald Johnson's been with it thirty years. And he doesn't complain, don't fuss, don't nothing, whatever you ask. It'll go down, and we not even trying, I mean.
It would be good to ask the city, because I know there at the central station, that is the county's fire truck, that's the fire.
Station two.
Did they get a new one? Because I know we had one one time that was purchased that was put here at the central station.
No, the one for the county at their station two by the mall.
Okay, that, so it went to the mall, and they got a new one.
Yeah, they bought a ladder truck.
It was here at the central station at one time. So will them, your volunteer firefighters probably in the meeting? And I know, uh, Mr. Bracken brought a price here one time about them getting gear. Maybe that's something to bring up at the, uh, in the meeting, that maybe the city can also, also share their powers on that gear, you know?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, because they got their own. We just want to be uniformed on the county side. Because what, we, we try to base it on whatever the city got in new air packs. We try to get our volunteers, because guess what, if they go on a house fire, if something happens, they can interchange their equipment. But if they're not operating on the same equipment though, that's a, that's jeopardy. So that's what we're trying to do. They just got, what, Scott's new?
Yeah, they, right, because it was all designed for gear, S E B A, or self-proteined breathing apparatus, and gear to be matched with the city. So if something go wrong, we can exchange bottles, equipment, or something like that. Gear, even if it come out, y'all need some spinners, we got some spinners, or helmets and all that. So we try to match up with them, you know, because if we don't, then we out there, and we can't, even fill their tanks up or use their tanks, because we got M S A's and they got Scotts, then we in trouble.
Mr. President, the other thing kind of concerning me with, with the county is the water supply. And I know we can't get that water supply, if we can't get that water supply up to them, to get, uh, hook them hoes up to them fire hydrants. We had talked about something else, we go get some, just drop water in there and go back to doing whatever. I know the water supply in the county, unless it done changed since I've been here, it was real low because of the pipes was much smaller than the ones in the city. Now, we, we talked about that all day.
I ain't gonna even laugh all day. Morning, boys. I give President Middleton a contract from J M Woods Auction Company on the four dump trucks that were, uh, that was coming off a buyback. Auction company come here, and it's a good example, Mr. Bracken, what you were saying of what, at the time, they offered us guaranteed buybacks from a company we purchased the truck from, two forty-seven. We got a guaranteed buyback from J M Woods at two eighty, with a nineteen thousand, six hundred dollar deduction for seven percent of that cost, which gives two sixty. So, you know, we're at several thousand dollars more than guaranteed buyback. And they want to pick them up at fourteen, six, seven, seven-six, is when those trucks were going back. We're able to keep them to September till I need them to get here, and then they still offer us more money.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Middleton had that before him, he would have to sign that contract with, with J M Woods.
I need a motion. A motion, my super brother Hodges, second, my super brother Gaines, any, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes up.
Thank you, sir. Other thing I have, I got two new employees. One is Brandon Dennis, who'd be a truck driver, labor Adams County worker. He started thirteen fifty an hour after six months probation, go to fourteen fifty hour. I started twenty-eight oh eighty annually. I have another one, same thing, Jonathan Felcher, truck driver slash labor Adams County worker. Same thing, 1350, go to 1450 after six months, 28, 080. And I'm likely to start a date to be August the 10th.
It's time, I, you heard the request, can I motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Do you have a discussion?
No, I'll just, I'll just, the correction I made, August what?
10.
10.
All in favor?
Start at 10.
All opposed? As opposed.
Please start at 10. Um, then I, uh, like to, uh, Charlie Campbell retired as a foreman out of Liberty Road. I would like to put Rashard Scott, uh, in his place. Uh, Rashard, Rashard Day would be today, August the 1st, as a foreman out of Liberty Road. Uh, his salary will be 39, 728.
You heard the request, can I motion by Supervisor Gaines, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
Mr. President, that's all.
All in discussion, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna keep saying, I, I, I 100% believe in promoting with Dean, will make sure whoever we promote, and we promote them into a position, they be well-trained to do the position that they promoted to. Because if you don't work with it, don't make people go supervisor.
Saying for that, Mr. Gray, he's been doing it, uh, he started a week after Mr. Campbell left, uh, in that position. I've been working with him, and, uh, Tim Chapman's been working with him, you know, on his paperwork and payrolls and things. You know, things that he's properly trained in and working with the men to do. So he has been doing it for, you know, since then, but, uh, I, I would put anyone in those situations, that I would think they can handle it, but like you said.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Dollar, but this is what I'm saying. Uh, doing your paperwork and doing that is totally different with your communication skills dealing with workers. You making new paperwork, but if you ain't never been in a leadership position before and they pushing in that, it all depends on how you interact with these other individuals to keep all this going smooth. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, I understand.
All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
When will he move into that position?
Today.
As of today. I hear that, I think he's got it to that, that there, you know, to, to get fine. I'll do that. Okay, and then I have, uh, another employee that's retired, that's gonna come back a part of time. Uh, we're going through the process now, I'll have it, uh, at the next board meeting. I just have, uh, one employee that'll come back a part of time, maybe ever work half of his time, either two days a week, or four half days, or whatever that may be. But, uh, people will come back and, uh, get more time working around the county.
What, what will he be coming back as?
People come back to run the motor grader on the, uh, well, countywide, pretty much. Uh, we just got a new motor grader, and, uh, he's gonna come back on Liberty Road, take that motor grader and take the guy with him with the dump truck. They just start trying to get all their gravel roads back up to the park and, uh, do that two days a week. So we all be able to catch up on our grade and get our roads back up to the park. That's what he's gonna come back to.
Probably this individual's been gone long enough.
Ninety, been all over, ninety days, correct? We've been checking with all that, like I said, that's the next board meeting, I'll bring it up and go ahead and take, you know, that type of stuff. But I just, we're gonna have him coming back. We'll finish up on, uh, across the point, maybe this week, uh, we do have to cross and finish. We're just widening it out some, uh, since this will be our last year to get material off the property we're getting it from. We're trying to widen the roads and things like that, to try to hold the water back to vessel Campbell in the county before we face with this again, but, uh, we should be finishing up this week, uh, down there. Like I said, this is probably our last week, probably to get material in-house to be, they serving all the blackers and going up to his property, and what he's doing with putting it in a true program. So we won't be able to do that, but we'll go finish up this week on that road. Uh, and I will have a cost back in the next board meeting or two of what it cost us and employers to, to work that road without materials. Uh, school must turn around for 2022, 2023. Uh, President Middleton has it, uh, before him, that we leave out, I mean, Friday, I'll coordinate with, uh, President Ford at the school. And I do have that, uh, turnaround, so I'd like for the board to adopt that.
And this is a request from the school district that we get each year?
Correct, right there.
Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
You got a list over there?
Yes.
I'll just get it to you.
Okay, uh, next thing I have, I'd like to share, they asked to, uh, reduce our equipment that was sitting abandoned to get it off our, uh, employee list. We sold several items to go deal, all our equipment's been picked up, every, everybody picked it up. So we ought to be getting a check, uh, to Mr. Kim sometime this week, next week, or whenever it may be. But we sold, I don't know, eight or ten pieces or whatever it may be. We do have that, and may have got places to get one, we'll get it out of inventory. Asphalt, guys, I've been asking him, you know, we got a number of what we gonna do, we're trying to, you're doing asphalt this year. After the first of the year, first few months, or whatever it may be, uh, it's gonna be tough to try to even get on the books. I spoke with asphalt company here, uh, last week. I, I, I would like to know why, could just try to get with him and, you know, see what we gonna do, how much maybe we gonna be able to do, or whatever, if we are planning on doing.
Yeah, we're gonna do some pay bills.
I, I, I can't bother my roles. I'd rather submit him roles to get pricing on what they would cost.
Okay, but do we have any kind of idea maybe what, what we gonna spend? Why can't maybe get with him or, or compete with him? I told my colleagues this afternoon, just to try to get, maybe on the books, like you said, they are busy, busy. See, come in the morning, it's below 50, 55 a brick, you know, they don't, they don't have, so. Uh, just, I, I need some kind of direction to what asphalt can do.
First, uh, we need to do a, 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 a resolution to, to figure out about this bond. I mean, uh, we could say we gonna spend so many millions of dollars until we do a resolution to try to get, get a bond, we ain't, we ain't gonna spend nothing. And then, and the longer we wait.
We may not nearly get to do it if we keep on waiting too.
But do we, do we have a resolution already?
We need a list of what we intend to do with this money.
Yeah, well, uh, Mr. President, I said this, Robert, I had not, because I know you have a four-year road plan. I had not picked any specific roads, and I know we have a lot of them, so I know probably most of them on that road are, are, are on that list because they bad. But I had not got with you to see what road that you intend to black out. But if we adopt a resolution, uh, I guess, we, we gonna have to get a, adopt a resolution today. Somewhere, I'm trying to figure it out, because, uh, if not today, by the next meeting, because if we don't get it adopted, we not gonna get the bond done, and not gonna get the money. So I wanna give it to you after this, if we do a motion, it's probably depend, uh, if we do do a motion, I would do a motion pending to review those roads, and I'm pretty much out here following road plan. Uh, because, uh, I mean, you, you probably, you know.
Yeah, like I said, they're on a four-year road plan, I've been going through it for the last week on, on overlays. Uh, I've been looking at some that we thought we could chip seal in the last few years, or microseal to go. They have to go to the overlay this, because the roads have gotten worse since we, you know, in the last several years to, to take that application, so they'll have to go to the overlay, I moved some of those. I've looked at striking the four-year road plan.
So you got a list?
Correct, on some stuff I did. Uh, I have some over here, and I have some, a lot of it in the office, but I do have a lot here that I've been working on and highlighted, and, uh, of what roads need. Just, uh, throughout the county, in every area.
What is, the bond is gonna be for what cost? How much, how much is the bond? Is it eight million or seven?
Seven and a half million. So we estimate, you know, 7.3.
7.3?
That's what I, just being conservative on it, but they did say, this is not, this is for later discussion, it's just handed out to you for the rec, the rec bond. This isn't the, the road bond.
I'm talking about the road bond.
I know, they were like, looking at it. The road bond, probably around, we, we wanna have more projects than, than money, so we can estimate it's seven and a half.
Okay, seven and a half?
Knowing that not everything that gets on that particular list, because that's what they asked us for, more than what, you know.
Okay, seven and a half, if the bond is, what we're asking for is seven and a half, that's what we'll be spending on roads. So.
That's correct.
So that's, that's the figure to him.
No, what he's saying, if the rec is wrong, he's saying we need a list of the exact roads that we gonna do with the seven and a half million dollar.
With the dollar amount, the dollar up more than that, you know, like I said, it is on the four-year road plan. We do have more roads, it's gonna be a dollar more than the seven and a half million dollar worth of road. Y'all saying we gonna do it, like I said, out of seven and a half, you know, you gotta take striking, you gotta take leveling, and things like that, so out of seven and a half, we'll probably get, you know, six and a half ball, probably, or whatever, but.
Okay, all right, and I'm probably gonna give a few, again, on somebody.
You know, I just think they can know that, I would get with him this afternoon, tell him that's our plan. Uh, I would get with Scott on what roads I had down, what roads is highlighted, you know, things from the four-year road plan, and things that we moved from chip sealed to asphalt, and we'll have that number miles from him.
Yeah, Mr. President, well, what I, what I am gonna recommend, I don't know if it'll be feasible for everybody, but when we get together, what I would recommend, uh, sometimes sit it together, instead of getting with, uh, Mr. Dollar on individual basis, I think, uh, until we figure it out, we can figure out some time that we all should sit down, and that way we can get concrete figures, uh, I mean, everybody bring to the table what you want, and, uh, time is running out, that way we can kind of deal with what we got. Uh, just all our bonds should be, I think we should sit at the table so we can move forward progress, and everybody at the table understand what we get, and that way, you know, avoid later somebody saying, well, I need this off, I don't need this off, and then you kick it down the road anymore, then it's gonna, uh, push us out from getting paid.
You don't wanna recess to a meeting this week, so we can get this knocked out?
Yes.
I, I would love to.
Y'all can get a list in by tomorrow, we can have one on Wednesday, I mean, we do. We don't need to delay this week.
Yeah, we don't need to delay for the week, I, it would be good for, we could sit all of us at the table. And that way, everybody know what's going on from the door. It won't be, uh, I come up with a pile of roads over here, and then somebody else not gonna like it, and then the bond shut down, we need the information in, now he come up with a pile, we fighting among each other. If you sit at the table and be upfront, we can get stuff done and we can move forward.
Yes.
That's just my recommendation to the board.
Everyone, if you just get a wish list of roads that they, they want done?
He got a, he has a, he has a four-year road plan that we signed. We sign a four-year road plan every year that we ride the road.
That's right.
So he's pretty much got, he got recommendation for us, and, and all of us ride our area. So, but it would be good for us to stay as close as we can to the road plan. I know it might be a little bit, and we can get what we need, that's why I say, sit down at the table together and take as much of his recommendation as we can as a road man. And then if it's something else we need to add as a tracking, we can do it. I yield the floor, Mr. President.
The road plan doesn't really have a ranking of roads, it just has basically the last time a road's been paved or.
Or that's paid, and then.
So it doesn't give a lot of research.
I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm not trying, I'm just trying to make sure we get a productive meeting, get it taken care of.
But that's what I'm saying, but what I'm, what I'm saying is not, not that fighting or nothing like that, but you have a four-year road plan that we pretty much all, well, we all rode the area every January, and that gives us a base idea, uh, of what roads need to be paid more, it just give us a base idea. And we, that's what I said, we are all gonna come to the table with certain things we want, but that base idea, that road plan, is already there, and I, I think we still can have a productive meeting. We have pretty much, uh, put priority first, just the same as we did with the recreation deal. We didn't come out and we didn't just say we're gonna sing it out, we made priorities, and we put priorities first, we took it out and we moved forward it, and I think we should be able to do the same thing with the road bond, put a priority, move forward it. Because this one here already on page. So why we couldn't just, I mean, it's not hard to do, we can follow the same thing, we can move forward.
Okay.
That's just my recommendation.
I wouldn't argue, I just wanna make sure.
No, I just wanted to make sure, that, you know, I wasn't arguing, but he has a four-year road plan that we all write and sign, we all have things in our, uh, different district that we wanna do. But, uh, under the unit system, just like roads and bridges and everything else, it should be done on a countywide basis with a road plan, a road man today, and that's what I was letting him know, that we do have a roadmap, even though we gonna kind of tweak it a little bit, because this supervisor, that supervisor, but the roadmap is there. We already have a bond that's been did, we sat down together, we agreed on a bond, priority first, and move forward. And I just said, I think we can do the same thing, and we wouldn't have to fight if everybody at the table, and understand. I yield the floor, Mr. President.
That's all I have.
That's it.
Do we wanna set that maybe now?
Yeah, we can.
Yes, we can set this.
Is that sound good?
I just.
No.
I don't know about Supervisor Wilson.
I can't do it thirsty.
Give me a win, give me a win, I mean, I got most of the rig, give me a wins and get it off.
So, so, let me get this straight, let me get this straight. So what you gonna go do is you gonna gather a list of roads from the four-year road plan, from worst to first, or whatever the case may be, and then once we get the list, we gonna tweak it a little bit and say, well, no, we want this road, and this road, and this road. This what you saying?
We're looking at all roads together, that's what we'll do, is get it compiled, I get it, I like the ones, which that's what I've been working on, of what roads need to be done in Adams County.
So you gonna give us a copy of the road that you think need to be done? And if, if, if we need to tweak it a little bit, then we tweak it a little bit.
Correct.
Okay.
What, I, I'll give him.
Who has to? Oh, he has to.
Yeah, I'm gonna try calling in, I know, I know I'm not gonna be here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call in. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get the old man to do the job, do what's right, that's what I'm gonna do. That what you, you don't look at, you ain't no beat, so why I supposed to be going out looking at no road that you do?
Okay. That's why I'm bringing it to you. This isn't a final thing, this is a full discussion, is why I'm bringing, we can talk about it. Just like we're gonna do with the road.
A little more?
More. Um, start off, closer giving updates on projects. We're gonna start off with SAP 01900M, that's a new striking on the project. Uh, we did complete the field survey on Friday, July 22nd, and we have already, um, got a good, got a good bit of the design completed. Uh, we'll be submitting our preliminary plan this Friday for that striking on the project. The, uh, pre-visit striking on the project, we're gonna file a post-out, we did a final acceptance date, by day of July, the 25th. So now we're preparing, preparing the final post-out documents. And at the next board meeting, I will be presenting, hey, board, such as that, uh, for you all to accept that project at the end of the year. During the last board meeting, I did present a, a further question of AT&T for this of roads. And I, um, I've gotten a question about whether or not I'm gonna approve it. And I, and I know that I proved attention on the ordinance, and I wanted to. and I know that I proved attention on, uh, the ordinance, and I wanted to see anything that's done in relation to the ordinance for permits, utility permits. Or can I sign it using your format that you already have?
Yes.
That, sorry, I'll shoot that one to you. Okay, we'll go ahead and prove it, if it satisfies a current ordinance, we got our proof there. I was gonna talk about the new amendment to the ordinance during my report, and talk about it now, if you wanna share it. I think the question that we had was, who's the recipient, who, who do you make a request for the permit to? On the draft, I may have had the road department, but would be better filed with our engineer, I think that's the. Looks like that. It does, I mean, just something we had, question to the board, to the, to people, where does someone need to file a request for a permit?
I think they need to file it to the engineer for the request for the permit.
So, so, let me ask a question. Now, we, we ain't the first, these ain't the two counties, and I know we ain't the first one to do this. So why we just didn't fix it, find out how they doing it in other places, and, and bring a recommendation back and say, well, in Harris County, they go through the engineering, in, 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 in Harrison County, they go through the engineering, instead of somebody, well, who, who gonna wanna do this?
We, we certainly can survey it, I also, you know, getting everybody in the discussion together.
No, the problem is say, go through the engineer.
We surveyed, I mean, I've so surveyed, you know, what I'm saying, that's how we got all this information, from the city to other counties and things like that, and that's where, you know, they go through us, their engineers, that's the request come through, because, you know, in the past, Mr. Marlowe would bring before too, and we could do.
Right.
So, so it, it come through the engineer.
Then that's your question, is it in black and white here, or how it should be done?
The proposed one that we have, I believe has it filed with the road department, and so that was the.
The one I received has it in, filed with the chancellor clerk.
What's that?
The current one, the one that I received said it's filed with the chancellor clerk in the field.
Yeah, exactly, right here. That's what it says, it's in black and white, that's how it's done.
The question is, do we need to do it that, or do it through the engineer? It's up to discretion of order. Is there a problem with it being filed with you?
Well, my only thing is that the new proposal has a fee associated with it, and I'm not sure you all want to collect, collect on that fee.
They should go through the chancellor clerk, I think they should go through the chancellor clerk, 'cause we dealing with fees right here.
That's a good point.
You dealing with money?
Yeah.
Again, that's why I.
Then this, we dealing with the money, we got chancellor clerk.
That's why.
Remember, I just sent it down to accounts receivable, and that would.
Yeah, you send the money to accounts receivable, and then send the request.
To, to the end.
It is to you.
Okay, fine. Yeah, that's a whole right of there.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
We need to adopt things like you.
Can we just scan in the request and keep them with?
Just give them all, I have the permit.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just so you know how, how y'all want me to, you know, keep up with it, if you're hoping to let you know the permit request remain, and I can always, line copy all that too, so.
So we need a motion for that?
You need a motion to.
Motion by Supervisor Hudson, just give me a second. Second, by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out. So the question I have is, the permit was submitted during the previous ordinance, so am I to contact this, you said they were bothering to resubmit for another new ordinance?
How, they filed it, requested from the old ordinance, it complied with the old ordinance, so, this hasn't taken effect until today, so you can go ahead and apply.
Appreciate it. Uh, next I have a Burt Road, uh, in the process of developing all the, uh, environmental documents, uh, we have several self-insultors performing the various surveys that need to be performed to complete the environmental process, in the process, I told you, we would go forward without design, so we have resubmitted for the next phase of design, um, we submitted on Friday, so we should receive, um, additional comments given in the next week or two from state aid, and then we'd be going closer to the advertising, the next phase should be, uh, more and more similar to advertising, so we should get the advertising the next couple of months for that period. And, um, we did submit the flat legal prescriptions to, uh, slow for both the private acquisition as well, and the temporary, he's gonna be accounting to the, uh, to the road usually.
Yeah, I think I got it Thursday or Friday, and we'll get going on the legals on that, one of the owners, where we have to get a right away from, is the United States Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. I'm not sure, I think we'll, you know, Kathleen Bond, might need to reach out to her, see who we can do, I probably don't have a best relationship with her, so.
Kathleen.
Was that, yeah, Kathleen, do you have a good relationship with her? Yeah, we gotta try to get you, reach out to her.
And the last thing I have is for EWP group four, um, the contractor has completed all the work required for South Polisheim to get well, well ahead of the deadline that is required, and they're right now, they're currently working on back putting on foot in the road, as well as clearing the exterior lane, uh, with that being said, they have submitted the first application in the amount sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents, um, I have provided everyone with status support as well as pictures showing the condition of South Polisheim road, so with that being said, we recommend paying this camera construction in an amount of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents. So, motion by Supervisor Gaines.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, eyes out. I have no update and necessary question for me.
I, Mr. President, I don't have a question, but I'm gonna make a suggestion, and, uh, since, uh, we kinda, you let me know if it's a good suggestion or a bad suggestion, we kinda falling short with our money to, uh, do Morgan Town Road, and I know at one meeting I said we need to submit a letter to, uh, Commissioner King, but what, what, what I'm, what I'm asking is, at all we do, we submit a letter to, uh, Commissioner King, we sit, sit, submit one to, uh, Commissioner Simmons too, 'cause I know a couple of us on this door have a pretty good relationship with Miss, uh, Willie Simmons, and, uh, I think we need to submit something to both of them, and let them know that, uh, we looking for some additional funding for Morgan Town Road immediately, so can we submit something? Wake up, Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize you were.
You look like you was somewhere else.
I was looking at Mr. Ford over here.
Is there anything else, if not as always, I appreciate, I appreciate you all's time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I've just got update on our current projects, I've got a group two EWP project, um, we have contractors completed, um, the two cemetery road and sites, Ken and Charlie, and Churchill Road and site, we're currently waiting on materials for the highway eighty-four. The two sites will.
Is it gonna be completed in time?
Yes, yes.
Is that two, is that yours, or?
Mm-hmm. Oh, we waiting on the boxes, the boxes is supposed to be, uh, ready around the fifteenth.
Around the fifteenth?
Mm-hmm.
As soon as we can close that, the, when can we request a reimbursement from USDA? When is that, you know, 'cause USDA wants them differently than what, than we do them.
We should be, 'cause I've got, I've got, I'm submitting a pay out for the contractor today, and, uh, we, we can do that this week, I guess.
Okay, we need that ASAP, 'cause we're getting into the time, we gotta get our cash balances back up.
Um, and as to that, I've got a pay application, uh, number two for the group two.
Do you need J K N S to make those requests? See, does Jim, is he the one that kinda, we need to talk with to get?
No, I can, I can do that.
You can do it? Okay, so you'll get with Angie this week?
Yes.
So we can get reimbursements in, okay, that's real critical, we gotta get that done.
Okay. So I've got a pay application for the contractor on group two, um, we recommend paying, uh, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, a hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents to the contractor for last month, and also I have a, uh, our invoice for the CE and I portion of that in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and five dollars and five cents.
You heard the request, Brandt, from Jordan Calvin Sessions.
So.
Motion by Supervisor Gaines, can I get a second? Second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion?
Yeah, Rob, you, you looked over all this?
Yeah, I've looked over it, um, let's do this, um. I think the contractor's got a question, but I think we can do that after the issue is.
Nah, mhm.
You wanna do it now?
Yeah, I wanna get it over with, I wanna, I mean, I got discussion in it, we sent a pay app in, and it's short seventeen thousand dollars. And first of all, I shouldn't have to come here in a board meeting to discuss a change of that magnitude on pay estimate that we submitted. So my question is, what, what, what constitutes the deletion of seventeen thousand dollars worth of work that we done?
Because of the, I mean, I can, I told, uh, Logan that I would discuss that with y'all, because I, we wanted to get this pay app in, or we can not turn the pay up in and discuss it, and, if, if this were.
Did you see the, the di, the difference? I know you came up with the amount, seventeen thousand.
It's in, it's in. It's in the description of.
It's in rip rap?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, I, I mean, I, I know what it is, we got, we have to discuss it, I mean, it's between us and the contractor at this point.
Yeah, but we turned it in on Monday, and we tried to get it out to you all week.
I'm supposed to have ten days, you're supposed to turn that in ten days before, so I can have time to review it.
You said you wanted it on the twenty-fifth. We give it to you on the twenty-fifth, that Monday.
Okay, well, I'll review it this week, and we'll be with you on that, and then I'll.
I tell you, hold up a minute.
I just, I mean.
Hold, 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 hold up a minute, uh, and we gonna have a special call meeting, uh, uh, for recess meeting?
Yes, on Wednesday.
So have that information ready, 'cause we gonna have a recess meeting this week, where we can approve whatever you need.
Yes.
For him, in the recess meeting, how, how that'll go.
That's fine, but.
It, uh, uh, um, it's gonna be, what, maybe it's Wednesday, it's gonna be Wednesday.
Okay.
So today, Monday, everybody keep their head, and we gonna try to work this out.
Well, Mr. Gray, I appreciate that, I truly do, but.
I understand.
This constantly happens, and I, I'm, I'm just, you know, as a professional courtesy, at least pick up the phone and say, hey, I'm, I'm cutting this, and this is why I'm cutting it. But, I mean. That's why, and you think, it ain't Logan that's bugging you, it's me bugging you, 'cause I'm telling Logan to call, I wanna see the copy of the pay estimate before we come to the meeting. If there's a problem, I wanna get it resolved before the meeting, but here we are, it's the meeting, I mean, I gotta be here, my daughter's over at the hospital having a baby, but I gotta be here to try to figure out what's going on. And that's the problem I got.
I understand, I'm just trying to come up with a solution, but this problem right now, in, in, in the near future, somebody needs to get it together.
I, I got my stuff together.
Yes, sir. So Barney, you're quick, maybe y'all need to get it together.
Yeah, mine together.
All right, move forward.
All right. We need a proof, it's still a mental motion.
All in favor? All opposed?
Eyes out.
So, what would, what should we, I mean, would you say that we're moving forward there, paying and discussing the seventeen thousand?
Sorry?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, he might not have a trust, but I'm saying, we, we want to be on the same page, when you get rid of, uh, we gonna prove, he approved that part of your money, you have a discussion on it, you know what I'm saying, that's why.
And then Wednesday.
And then Wednesday, we're discussing, but I will say, since I have, uh, asked for the floor, as you go, I want, I had wrote in my, uh, list to say thank you for your hard work, I know we met, uh, got a question on Oak Ridge and State Park, when I come here, before you end this report, but we had a meeting, you had some sharp deadlines that you had to meet, that, that, that was almost impossible, and even though it might not be in, and per se, my district, we are supervising the unit system, so, uh, Adams County is a whole, is our responsibility, and I've been riding, and I've seen the work that you have did, I've seen the time and amount, and I wanna say I appreciate you stepping to the plate and doing what we needed to in a hard time like that, up front time, and I thank you, I thank you. I yield the floor.
And Supervisor Gaines, if we can get this figured out on Wednesday, it would not delay him receiving payment, checks still get doctored and get approved, so, he'll get, he'll, it won't delay him any further if we can get it worked out on Wednesday.
Well, I agree, Scott, but in the meantime, we need to work it out where it won't happen no more, where he won't have to be coming up and help, like he said, and dealing with this at a board meeting, that's what need to be worked out.
Brandt, do you have something else?
I have an update on group three, um, they have completed all, at this point in time, they've completed all their, uh, let's see, Katsu Lane, Deerfield Road, and Old Metal Road projects, they've completed that, they moved out on Providence Road, and are currently working on it now, um, and I have a, uh, pay application for that project, to the contractor, an amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. And I have a invoice for the CE and I for nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
You heard the request.
Uh, the message, y'all have reviewed it, though?
Yes.
Yes, I know, I've been to, uh, all of them, and, uh, I was at Deerfield last week, they was putting rip rap on Deerfield last week, I, I don't know, did they grow it, or whatever, if they done whatever they're doing. They were putting fabric in there, in rip rap.
They were finishing up last week, and resting on the progress around.
I was there last week, and they were putting rip rap down.
The motion?
Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Aye, sir.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
Yeah, Robbie, would you please look at that on Deerfield, to make sure that they have completed with everything?
They, they have, and like I said, we'll have the file on it, but they have done, that's what they said now, I think we'll look at the file and see.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, eyes out.
And I guess that, uh, that's all I have for the other people objects, um.
I have a question, two questions, one of them, update on State Park Road, the next one is, well, I have to have a first name, all right, get the next one.
Uh, they are, they've been putting down their, their granite material for the base there, and grating it, and then, at some point, I think they're gonna start later term.
Yeah, did you, uh, well, I talked to Scott about, I just wanted to bring in, put in meetings, uh, then Sam Blackman, did you talk to him, have you talked to him, uh, it was?
No, I, we had heard a little bit about the driveways up there.
Yeah.
We had gone back and put light stages in the design and added driveways, um, Mr. Blackman had, we gave him a set of plans, and he told us where he wanted driveways in there, and we put those in the plan, well, we went back and added driveways, we added a lot more than were, were in the original plans, but that's all that we, we've heard, there was a question about the driveway.
Yeah, well, I was in the initial, I wasn't in the beginning, but after I took off, when we got together, me, Scott, uh, Robin, uh, Mr. Blackman, the plans that we started on, that everybody agreed up on upfront, and, uh, those are there, so I, I hadn't seen any changes since then, this is the first change that he's asking, I'm not. And, uh, those are there, so I, I hadn't seen any changes since then, this is the first change that he's asking, I'm not saying we can do it, we can't do it, I'm not the engineer, I'm not the state, so I'm not doing it. But I had a certain citizen that had a question, that I told him that I would ask, if, uh, so at some point, we can exchange numbers, can you give Mr. uh, Sam Blackman James a call? And if it's something that you can't do, uh, law contract, I understand that, whereas if it's something you can do, we wanna do that, I'm not asking, but I'd just like to be a man of my word, if I tell him we gonna make the connection, we gonna make the connection. I like to give people a direct answer, is it in their favor, if it's not, at least you can owe them the truth, and I wanna do that.
And he may be fine with it if, if you show him the plans that he picked out, too, he may just want confirmation.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, we just had a request, or we just heard that there was a question about the driveway.
Okay. And the next question is Oak Ridge.
Seventy-two Oak Ridge.
We're on the design now of that.
We, what's the deadline, Robbie, uh, November?
November, whatever, we were there, spent almost two months now.
Yeah.
We both have all that worked out within the first two months, and then we're gonna put it out to the contractor.
To the contractor, right here?
I've been asking to stay just a second, I know we need to go with daughters in the hospital, but just to figure out where we at on that and what's going on with that.
And we know we did all of sit out there, me, Grant, Robin, uh, Scranson, and Mike from USBA, we said like two months, it's a project. So we pushing that line, I mean, we, we need an answer on it, other than that, we gonna lose, we, we, you know what I'm saying? And I think we have given y'all those right at two months to do it, and I know you said you working, I'm not trying to be a butt hole or nothing like that, but it's busy. So I would really appreciate, soon as you can, bring those plans, 'cause you, you know the situation we in, if we can't get it by deadline, we lose the money. We lose full funding on the federal money if we can't, and even though it was gonna be a push with him to do it, he agreed to move forward if you could have him them plans, and you said you think it'll take two months. It's gonna put him at a short window coming into the window, but he can, so I really would appreciate if y'all get those plans so we loo- before we lose those federal funds for that project. Are you in the floor, Mr. President?
Is that all you have?
Nah, I got one more, if you got anything. Oh, did, uh, State Aid, Mr. Marlowe, make a ride on, uh, State Park last week?
They did, they were.
Got any kind of update of what, venture, risk issue?
I don't have any update, but I want to say, um, oh, they're just, they're laying down the granite.
Well, I knew they put the gravel, but I didn't do the three, it had an update, yeah. Okay. Alright, that's all I have.
Need an update on what to do with Robin's Lake Dam?
Yes.
I've been asking, has gotten any?
Yeah, we all did.
October thirty-first.
That's all I have, unless there's anything else.
Anybody else have a question? Can we have an update for Robin's Lake for the next meeting, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
When?
Wednesday?
Yeah, if I can.
Okay.
Y'all want to send an email or what time does the meeting?
Nine AM.
Nine?
Nine AM.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I have a new hire, uh, a long before time position, Kimberly Singh, who they have all their papers right there. Kim Singh? Yes. Is that your only one? Yes, sir.
Is that in the budget?
Yeah, that's a long job. New hire hourly twelve dollars, annual rate twenty-four nine sixty. Got most of our supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
That'll be it.
Thank you, sir.
Scott, you wanna bring up that juvenile to see if.
I mean, I guess we can, affect the board's attention, there's a, the state is issuing a advisory saying everyone beware, uh, they receive spending from the federal government, and as such, the state incomes under the guidelines of federal regulations. And one of those regulations is that, uh, even if you are, uh, if you are under the age of eighteen and you are charged with adult crime, you're still not to be placed with other, uh, adults, you've not been sight or sound, and that's a standard language for, for incarceration. Uh, so the sheriff sent it to me, I had forwarded it to, uh, Judge Brown, Judge Flackwell, and Judge Sanders, and asked them, we need to get together or how we need to proceed, um, and I talked to the sheriff, we talked Friday about it, too. Haven't gotten a response yet, so we don't, and the sheriff probably wanna put, take some action on it if, if he can, so.
We now had that discussion, uh, the statute says that, uh, they, uh, should be housed in adult syst- in the juvenile system, unless in the interest of justice, the judge decides they should be housed in the adult system. So there is a little loophole in that. As far as that sight and sound thing, that I believe that's trumped by, if, if, if a judge decides that that juvenile should be housed in the adult system, in the interest of justice according to that statute, then I think that trumps the sight and sound limitation.
Correct, but the judge would need to make an affirmative decision to do that, as opposed to the, the state laws default, they go to the adult system, the federal law, the default is they go, stay in the juvenile system. Federal government, or federal laws preempt state laws, so the default is they're in the juvenile system unless the, unless the judge makes that particular finding.
Right.
The other question, I talked to Judge Brown about it, it would seem to be the judge that needs to make that finding would be the circuit judge, not the, 'cause that's who has jurisdiction.
So then there's a provision for every, I think, forty days, uh, reviewing the case of each individual, and then, and also in the, in the statute, there's a stipulation that says, before you put them over there, you should, uh, evaluate the size of the individual and the capacity of the individual as well, so. I'll just, should be taken into account.
Mr. President? Yes, sir.
I hear all this state and federal language, what the state say, what the federal government say, at the end of the day, everybody know in this room that, uh, it's really not safe for no kid to be over there. So whoever made the decision to put them over there, then they, they the one need to be held accountable, they ain't gonna be on this board, because I'm telling you right now, that a kid don't need to be over there, that's just my opinion. Now whoever made the decision to house them over there in unsafe environment, that's on them. I'm done with that.
I think that's why the federal regulations exist.
And some of these, some of these kids are six-two, two-eight, so, uh, so there's, you got, all kids.
They don't have the room, uh, uh, nothing over there to put a kid to watch him different from that, they just don't have the space over there.
And the, and our, the tools that we have available to control the individuals over there are very limited by the state, we cannot use any, uh, pepper spray or anything of that nature, we cannot use taser. So we have somebody who is provisioned, the only option we have is to talk them down or put our hands on them, and as you know, when you start putting your hands on people, somebody's gonna get hurt. And, and the way things are going now is it would be even better for the officer to get hurt than a kid, as far as our legal, you know, liability, so. So we are limited in what we can do to these individuals, so I think that should be taken into consideration as well. What are you saying, Scott, you know this, when it comes to the juvenile system, this was the best interest of the child, it ain't what's the best interest for everybody else. And so he, he, Mr. Upshaw, he is directing the same, that's why I guess it's case by case basis, right? Because some of these juveniles, some of the worst ones, we had to deal with, right, you did, absolutely, they worse than the those. So I give, but I want the board to beware.
Yeah, I mean, it's a case by case basis, that's, that's why that's the law, is the law, but if default is they're juveniles, so. So that needs, it needs to be adjudicated.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? You have an integrated behavioral health thing or facility for juveniles? Integrated behavioral counseling to have for.
Yeah, we have, we have a psychological person on, on that person.
Okay, I'll call, you don't have one on set?
No.
So do you have a preventive work plan to de-escalate situations so they don't?
We, we, I'll, 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 so training.
Okay.
The de-escalation techniques.
Okay.
And we do that in our annual training as well.
Alright, we're gonna move forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. Just a bit.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
I have one thing, um, yes, extension service come out every quarterly with their, um, extension mag- magazine, and I have some books for a court there, we had two our local, uh, Adams County homemakers, Miss Lydia Edney, the meter real feature in their magazine, they both have over twenty-two or twenty-five years of volunteer work with the Adams County homemaker, they were featured in the magazine, they are two of the top homemakers in the whole state, so they were chosen, missing the state, we fit, like I said, it's amazing, go to all eighty-two counties, so. Y'all wait and get one of the copies, magazines, I left some in our court there office, but they, um, homemakers do a lot of sewing projects, they do, they, um, they dress, they make the foreign countries and local, um, communities, so they are very active in, um, Adams County also with the state, so they were, um, chosen, like I said one before, because they're good community service worker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Sheriff, like still laughs.
Yes, yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Get some hot dog for me.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, further notice from Adams County Justice Court, um, about a month ago, Ms. Lewis put me in contact with a. Mr. Brandon Gonzalez, and he's with US Imagining out of Florida, so he came in and did an assessment, but he also focused on the, he said somebody brew, brew, I don't know, it might be, but he asked, that I asked the board to combine Justice Court along with the board.
Something about going paperless into Justice Court, uh, the board has talked about imaging Harold Mill Building in the Dean's Records, um, and I talked to Verna, I actually didn't talk to her today, I, we emailed very briefly, I know you wanted me to call you, Verna, I didn't have a chance to. And so Verna has a proposal, uh, for imaging of the Justice Court, had it paperless.
Is it gonna be a fee?
It's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, I think.
Yeah, we know this budget process, then she need to come before, uh. Budget time and submit it then.
That's my way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll submit that, Verna, that request over to Angie for her, when, to see whether that's something that we can work into the budget. It doesn't, it prob- probably doesn't fall under our, at the present time, it doesn't fall under the budget that we could put in with the rest of the imaging stuff, because of the amount, but that doesn't mean that can't be something that we can budget in, if there's other funds become available in that particular thing, or, uh, or during budget time, too, so.
Okay.
If it's something the board's interested in, in pursuing, and I think imaging could certainly help the Justice Court, you know, moving forward, having, going paperless and so forth to be really, really good, free of the office. Office space, to be honest, the top floor of their office, they filled with records and.
And, and also, uh, he, he said that we would have to have the software from.
Yes, your scanning's actually not. It, your scanning's actually that expensive, your, your, your indexing and, and whatnot is, if you got these scanned documents, they can't search them, it doesn't really get any good, um, but yeah, having the software's gonna be.
Uh, we, I want you to report me.
Uh, I'm gonna forward, but I'll copy you, Verna, to, uh, Angie, that amount, I'll, I'll forward the invoice to the rest of the board, too, so they can see, and at the present time, it's a little bit more than what's within the, the budget of where we're doing the scanning, but that doesn't mean that that can't change.
Is that all you have, Verna?
Fifty.
Thank you. Chair.
Me.
We think so.
Good morning, good morning, boy.
Morning.
I got a couple things that I need to run back over, pull up my notes here, um, the first thing I wanna do is go to the trash report, a little bit of, of July, and then of course, get you the sign so we can get that written version on this. Uh, District One, forty-bays, District Two, thirty-two, District Three, twenty-one, District Four, forty-eight, District Five, fifty-seven, and the reason for the low numbers is because we had several people out there that got hit with COVID, and so we couldn't run, run as much as we need to, I know you all hope that people aren't, aren't trapped, that's not the case. Anyway, the next thing I have on here, the next thing I have on here is the situation with, uh, one of our officers who are at the school, as you all know, what we did was, the way we set it up, Scott, we set it up with our salary that we were gonna pay from the sheriff's office, and then the school, and we even got another grant on top of that to pay additional salaries for school resource officers. And that additional money, at first they said it was gonna be ten thousand, but some kind of way it ended up dropping to five, well, I didn't want, I didn't want candidate on the hook or anything in addition to money-wise, budget-wise, with the changes with that, so we didn't budget for it, so her salary is, would have ears from her, so this would be the official salary coming from the school, it's five thousand dollars. They sent the check to us and we put it into, um, general funds, and what I, what I asked was for the candidate to have her a separate check minus her fringe tax and the things.
Okay.
She's, you, you got the check, right?
I did not deposit that check into general fund.
Yeah, that, that great issue, we, we, you and I talked about it, we needed to ask the school to issue their own check to this person, 'cause they were arguing, we'd be doing retroactively paying somebody for something we don't owe.
Yeah, and she's already on our payroll.
Right.
Well, can I get a budget amendment to put it on payroll so we can pay these young ladies because they.
That's the, that's not the problem of paying them, the problem is you can't pay somebody for work they already did. It's a pro- that's why I think the school just needs to issue to pay it, we can jump on and talk.
But that's why I wanna be, that's why I really like to talk this stuff, I'm trying to do it, too, though, 'cause I didn't ask it, and I asked like.
So the school issued a check to? The school issued the check to the chef department for us to deposit the check and turn around and, and pay her. Well, you could just, you just tell me to back and.
I will try and be him, but I asked the school three times, and they said, the way that Grant is reading, the MOU is with the Adams County Board of Supervisors.
And I asked him to send me the MOU.
I got it right here.
You got the MOU?
I got it right here.
I asked to see it.
We got to start talking outside of meetings, me and you talk a lot, Scott, this.
I know, I emailed, Jackie asked her to send me the MOU.
So let, let, let me say something, uh. No disrespect to the chef department, but at this point, the school district ought to know that everything comes through the board supervisor, so when they do something, they need to contact the board of supervisors, and everything else gonna go down the pipe. And when they wanted to get a resource officer, they contacted the board of supervisor, but when they want a family or just a lady, don't contact the board of supervisor.
I, I do whatever I need to do to get her paid, and, and like I say, this grant came up really after the MOU was already in place, it really did, so they, they do contact us and we bring it to the board, you know, collectively, but like the up school resource officer has already received, he's from us, she don't want to see.
Well, she can play, it is from.
He got it from the school, 'cause he works directly from, he works directly for us, he don't work for us. He got it from the school because he works directly from, he works directly for the school, he don't work for us, you know? But we need time to look over it, when you can come back on this guy.
Yeah, definitely, come and do it. We want her to get the money, no one's objection to that. We just don't want, I don't want to pay for it out of my own pocket, which is what would happen if it's not.
He hopes they're okay to approve and they come back and say it wrong, this is probably gonna come out of you.
That's, that's why I said, I want her, I want her to get it, I just don't want to pay for it out of my own money.
You, you had it right there, and so, so we, we gonna get together when, because I don't, by, by when, say it next week?
Hopefully we can, Sheriff, I just say this, you know, we support you all, everything you do. I understand you trying to get your person paid, we want paid, but understand this too, Sheriff, we ain't trying to pay the money back. We, we want it legally done, and so, you know, I say this every meeting, where I say, communication is the key. Communicate on the front side so we can go through business, we won't have to have these things in public meetings and stuff like that.
We talked about this, we talked about, and I said that it was an issue.
But see, this is one other thing, I'm gonna yell this for lack of time. I always say one thing, and y'all probably know it right now, all involved partners should be at the table of a discussion. Because when you got three partners and two talking, not with the school, they always end up in the same position. And this ain't just referred to you, I mean, sometimes it's in your favor, sometimes it's not, but you know, I always believe, anything we do, same thing with the road bomb. Put all involved partners at the table and we can make an informed decision to keep moving.
Hey, listen, we and Scott are not in disagreement on this.
And we even talked about this particular issue.
But that, that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying y'all not in disagreement, but the school, now, this, this, he's the legal representative for us. I'm just saying, the school board, whoever writing the check, I want, first of all, I definitely want her to get her money. I don't want her to work for free, but I don't want end up paying the money illegally and then we had to pay it for. So I'm just saying, not you and Scott, get whoever necessary with the school board and y'all can get that side and get it paid.
All right, if I can get that check back, I drive it down to the school, because I called and I've asked, but I'm gonna ask them again to cut it directly to her.
What we're gonna do, I got the MOU, I'm gonna pick up the phone, Angie, we're gonna call state audit, and then we'll get together before Wednesday and have it, have a solution how she gets paid.
That works for me. Listen, I have no disagreement with that, I love communicating, that's why my next question is, is about budget meeting. And y'all set a date so we can communicate before budgets are set in place.
I have none.
All right, I want this communication outside of this meeting, so I'm asking for it. I know, I know we probably the only ones that impressed it, but then road group, so I'm just asking, has a date been set on there?
Be up to the county administrator.
It'll be up to the county administrator.
She'll, she'll let you know the date.
Okay.
Typically throughout August up through September.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, the next thing I have, I just want the board to be aware of this, so we communicate and put it. I got another check here for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for reimbursement. What that is for, it is from Southwest Mental Health, and it's for the eight hundred and twenty-one meals we can supply over here. So I'm just, this has been sent to, to bookkeeping, I can't say what his deposit or anything like that, I'm just taking you how aware of it. When you see this twenty-two thousand dollars, two, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, that's reimbursement from the deal that we have in place with Southwest Mental Health to feed them, feed their consumers, uh,
Yeah.
food that are being cooked by, uh, staff and team, so I just want y'all to know that's what that is.
You need to have revenue, man, that over, man, but.
It's already.
Those kind of funds right there goes, I don't, I don't even know why they bring them up, all the, with revenues that come in. It's already in the budget, the fund is already prepared and it goes to accounting, but it has received in, and it's gonna go into general funds.
And again, I'm not asking, I'm just taking y'all aware, that, that's why I'm bringing it up, because y'all actually made aware, so I'm sitting here making y'all aware. That's all it is. Um, next thing I have is, I got several new hires, and before I get to the new hires, I just wanna thank you all, because if you all didn't work with us on these new hires, we would be in a lot of workshakes and blurbs, we were down a pretty good amount of bullying staff in jail and criminal justice side, but with these new hires, I think we only have like one opening left. And compared to other agencies like J, JBD right now, JBD is down a hundred and ten houses. So I wanna thank the board and the administrative team for putting up with us, dealing with us when we called and say, hey, we really need to get this person off it. But we're trying to do things the best way we can, and as you know, as we've gotten up the staff, the issues in the field have went down. I don't think you give me, uh, screaming about these conditions every once in a while, but I even stopped screaming about that, because I know supervisors are backing up, we're gonna do things in time now. But I want y'all to know, if y'all didn't do this, we wouldn't be in a position today, and there's not many agencies that can say that they don't have one opening in this state, considering everything. So with that being said, I give up to, um, President Milton, I don't, Milton, I don't know which one you wanna start with, I know you have this in front of you, I'll let you go, so I don't mess you up.
You got three, either correctional officer or jail division, so let's do those together.
Okay.
Uh, you got Austin Anderson.
Yeah.
Eliza Lately and Daven Irving.
Yes.
Are those the only three?
Those are the three for the jail.
These are all three new hires, thirteen, twenty-three an hour, annual rate twenty-seven, five, eighteen, forty.
Yes, those are the three for the jail, yes.
Okay, you heard the request, the sheriff.
Some of them.
You got motion by Senator Hutchins.
Yeah.
Second by Senator Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
Now you should have one for the courthouse, Lynn Griffin.
Um, court, yes, uh, same amount, thirteen, twenty-three, twenty-seven, five, eighteen, forty. You heard the request?
So what?
Motion by Senator Gaines, can I use second?
Second.
Second by Senator Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
All right, and the last one is gonna be Ernie Swimmons, he's, uh, yeah, Turk, Ernie Swimmons, he used to be investigative PD. I forgot how many years of service he had, but he's actually coming on to replace the current school resource officer.
That's a new hire, hourly rate seventeen ninety-one. Annual rate thirty-seven, two fifty-two. Got a motion by Senator Hutchins, second by Senator Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
All right, the next thing I have is, I do have one, well, I do have something that's here. The state gave all certified law enforcement officers a thousand dollars, uh, COVID pay that they're issued statewide. And in order for it to happen, happen, I have to have a non-shared resolution passed by the board in order for them to receive it. It's not coming out of county, but it's coming straight from the state, so Scott, I need to say the thing only if I always go here and ask the board.
You've already sent them, the form that was going out, you've already sent the form, the resolution that's going out statewide, so it would just be adopted in the same one, the justice case.
I make a motion that we adopt, um, the same resolution that, um, that the state had.
Got a motion by Senator Gaines, second by Senator Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
I appreciate you all doing it, uh, those are the resolutions up here. The last two, last couple things I have is, I do want y'all to be aware of what's going on with prison, and, and I hope it doesn't affect us. If it does, we should keep rolling like we did, like we do, but, uh, right now, they have, the rea- and that's probably the reason why I was asking for the budget meeting, so we can't talk about this, you know, outside of the meetings, but the prison is, is starting to offer five thousand dollar payments, and they, oh, look, they're starting to pay to eighteen fifty hours. So I don't know how that's gonna fit things for us, but, you know, times change, costs of living change, people change, and that's really the purpose of it. That's part of the reason why we asking, so we can really sit down and get into the, the big brilliant things, but I just want you all to be aware of it, so if you see other stuff, it may be, I don't know.
Except for any employee?
That's for people who are referred, so if you go apply, you won't get the five thousand, but if you're referred, then you'll get a five thousand dollar sound, folks. Uh, the last two, the last two things I have is, I wanted to say that I appreciate you all for last week's nine-on-one meeting. There's nothing like the common sense, and I thank you all, you's a lot of, I know you don't need to hear that from me, but I feel it, tell you all, that I appreciate you all being open and honest in those meetings, and I just don't want no first thing that comes forward. The last thing I want to tell you all is, this young man, Everett May, but he has the Lexus Washington Foundation. I went to the safety room, because I seen a bunch of cars over there, women, they were just, you know, because it seemed too different to see what was going on. And when I walked in there, I was getting so much energy from kids and things that they had going on for back to school and giving. And I had never heard of the foundation, but I knew Miss Brenda Washington, who was named in honor of, they had basketballs going on, they had haircuts going on, they were feeding kids and folding, they had all kinds of healers, just, it was really electric to have to see that. So I just wanted to give that guy a shout out, because he told me he spent fourteen thousand dollars out of his own pocket to have supplies not only for the students, but he also gave supplies to the school teachers, and this thing I seen, you could tell, it was, it was, it was something to see the way he did it together, so who knows, you know, break down, drive with them, then I give it back, that's all I have for that.
Sheriff, I do have something I'm gonna follow up on, you know, we've been following since February, uh, we finally got that, uh, payment of Project Nolan cameras that we are trying to provide our citizens some safety and a better quality of life by being able to not be afraid to sit out in the yard, so now, we have pushed the ball, can you give us any timeline of when we will start installation? Because I know we purchased the cameras, what, months ago?
We'll have an answer.
We'll have an answer for you, Wednesday.
Well, I wanna ask.
I didn't know it had to take years right now, so I, I wasn't aware of that, but Mrs. Kingie has something.
Yeah, I, um, the board agreed to purchase these cameras, so in my opinion, the board was approved to amend their budget for the thirty-four thousand dollars to pay for these cameras.
Don't move.
And, and again, I wanna come with the board, go ahead.
Motion by who? Senator Hutchins.
Yeah.
Second by Senator Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
I thank you all for doing that, because I, I think I told one of you all individually that I believe you all gonna be the first board in the state to be secretary to, to Project Nolan in accounting. And that says a lot about you all as a board, and that you all care, uh, one, about helping citizens, and two, about helping us to drive dollars as well. So I thank you all for always being in support of law enforcement, and for me.
Same. Appreciate it, Sheriff, and, you know, that's one of the things that we do, help sit at the table, and aiding you, it aids the citizen. You know, you heard me say it, and speak it in the E nine-one-one meeting on last week. I, I'm a, always want, if somebody called nine-one-one, it's the sheriff, it's policemen, it's fire, uh, ambulance, so they're always my top priority. You know, so many things that citizens ask us to do that we're not capable of doing, so I'm always supporting that, when you get a citizen a better quality of life, and I appreciate the job they do. And as long as we can, within our means, and not go to jail, we are gonna support you and keep it going, thank you.
I don't want y'all to go to jail, but I wanna say this, when they put Project Nolan Holiday Apartment, that, that year prior that they had Maxwell Murder Holiday Apartment. Since they put Project Nolan in, I think you had one, and that was a guy who had just got out of prison and didn't know.
That's right.
They had cameras, and he was on camera, fully committing his murder, and so we are hoping and expecting for the same kind of results no barriers in the county.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, any more departmental reports? Public comments?
Hi, Ms. Lewis.
Okay.
Uh, as a former employee with y'all, I'm requesting just like a brief.
Yes, yeah. Name and address.
Uh, good morning, uh, you are as a former employee with y'all, with you all, I'm just requesting a quick, uh, session with you all regarding confidentiality as it relates to one, one of your former employees, I mean, your current employees, and I want to be in the comment.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so in a moment, Will. All right, um, we're gonna come to the table.
Yes, sir.
Wake up, Rick.
First of all, uh, we did a ten-hour conference, uh, me and Senator Hutchins and, uh, how to rock. No, I did not smoke no weed.
If you had, it would've been legal.
We are having a, M, MAS are having a two thousand and twenty-two file conference, November first through the third, as a national convention center. And, uh, I don't know who is on, uh, committed for E nine-one-one, so we need to go on, get that straight. And, uh, Robby and Warren, uh, I don't know if you're still getting calls, I'm still getting calls over on Vaughn Drive by the sign, uh, no driving through.
We discussed that, me and Mr. Gaines have discussed that, like I said, I think.
We discussed, last week.
At last.
Yeah.
And, and Justin sent email to the mayor, to the alderman in that area, I don't think he's got a response back, what he's telling.
So let me ask you a question. Uh, since this, uh, state highway.
MLK come out.
Yeah. It always been, what is it, five?
Thirty feet.
There's some MLK and then turn on the bomb.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a state highway, right?
Yes.
So do the city have permission to put a sign on the state highway? Do, they need to get permission from the state to put it on the state highway?
They want the sign on Vaughn Drive.
I thought they wanted to sign on Martin Luther King, where the trucks wouldn't turn and go on Vaughn Drive. I mean, if you got the sign on Vaughn Drive, the truck can already turn.
That's what I'm saying, see, that's what she keeps, you know, they won't wait limit sign, they won't give some bomb, but as you're speaking, you're exactly right. If they're want to keep them off of there, they gotta put them on out of state right away, out on the state, and that is state.
Do the city or the county have, well, since it's inside the city, they have to get permission from the state department to put that sign up on the state right away?
I think the city wants to do it.
The city don't.
Yeah, for a second.
Huh?
I think the city wants to keep the way, I think the city wants them to continue going down that.
No, 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 hold on, man. Man, I used to be the alderman of Ward too, and it was a problem with the truck that driving up and down in a neighborhood. So then they got the money and did this other road, what's the name of that road?
Daveley.
Daveley Road for the big trucks to go down Daveley Road, so that's not the case?
One didn't, can you talk to?
Yes.
Paul, remember that?
Yes, well, I, I recommend Huck to talk to the alderman, and when we talked about it, it was, it's something that they don't wanna be, that they didn't discuss.
I'm done with it. Okay, next thing is, uh, uh, I know we talking about all the jobs that we, uh, having in Adams County, but I picked up the newspaper and it was surprising to me that Coca-Cola is meeting matches in two thousand and twenty-four. I just wanna know if anybody reached out to Coca-Cola and talked to them. I know at this point it's probably a corporate placebo for them to move, but still, uh, just like IP and all the other places, we did have conversation with them to try to convince them to stay. I know, I mean, that's somewhat a challenge with it.
Correct.
Because I walked in Walmart and the guy was stacking Coca-Cola, actually we have the city or the county talk to Coca-Cola to try to convince them to stay, so somebody need to talk to Coca-Cola. And, uh, I already mentioned, Scott, don't forget to, uh, maybe put something in writing to those two commissioners about Martin Town Road, because we do have a good relationship, not only with Commissioner King, but I know Supervisor Hudson has a real good relationship with Commissioner Simmons, so.
Simmons?
Simmons.
With the Simmons. And, uh, we did do this immediately, man. And, uh, what, where are we with the, uh, Southview? I mean, it's kind of quiet, I hadn't had no calls, but I know that state property, that state got back with you, been determining how we gonna deal with this issue?
Yeah, we need to get on the phone with the right person at the Secretary of State and get it back. I, I know that we looked at reevaluating that property because it was overly assessed, and I'd asked Wayne if he'd reassessed it, and I'll check back with him as well. If we can get the reassessment, uh, in a more accurate amount, then I believe we can gain control over that property and do the things that we need to do. Uh, but let's have, I'll have a report to you, I hate to say this to everybody. Hate to say this to everybody's farmers, at least by the next regular board meeting, we'll back on that. Um, but we have a different, we, we have a couple of different strategies on that one, Ricky.
Okay, uh, and like I said, we did a ten day conference, but I don't want the sheriff, uh, 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 brandy or this board to think that, uh, this mental health issue is not an Adams County issue. This issue is, is, is in the United States of America. And, uh, it, it was, it was talked about at our conference and they gave us some, uh, literature on it, but, uh, I think it's something that everybody trying to find a solution to that, to that serious problem. Now, I, I serve on the Transportation Committee and I had, uh, mentioned to this board about some, uh, they wanted to take that money, some money that they send down to the state and it comes to the citizens in the county. So, uh, they propose a resolution in support of direct funding, federal funding to local governments for the improvement and maintain of local roads in America. What they're saying is, uh, they're gonna lobby the president and the congress for to send that money directly to counties and cities and not to the state. And the problem is, once you send money to the state, you might have a, a, a democratic president and a republican governor, then they put stipulations on that money and, and, and we have problems, just like that two point four million dollars. We have problems getting our money because they put their own stipulations on our, on that money. So it would be good if, uh, this proposed resolution by the Transportation Committee, uh, go through. It's not just Mississippi, it's all, all over. So I think that would be something good. And last, not last, but, uh, I, I did pick up the newspaper and, and saw something, uh, where, uh, Jill Xanders was, uh, stepping down and, and, uh, they had to- Well, make a long story short, at the end of the, uh, conversation, it says something about, uh, health reason. I just, my prayers go out to her and whatever wrong with her, health, anything wrong with her, I just pray for her and her family. And last, uh, you know, I'm doing a little obituary. My sympathy goes out to the Mayberry family, Kane family, Martin family, the Taylor family. And also my prayers are with, uh, Supervisor Wilson and, uh, uh, volunteer firefighter, uh, Donald Johnson. And this young man passed away. And I can remember when we formed a mentoring team, it was the first one in this county. And the governor gave us a award for the Natchez mentoring team. And Reverend Brooks was instrumental in, in helping put that together. He passed away, so my sympathy goes out to the Brooks family. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Secretary of Defense.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. First, uh, I would like to, uh, for us to adopt the resolution for Jill Xanders for her years of service. I make a motion.
Motion, Secretary of Defense, second, Secretary of Defense, go ahead, any discussion? It's, uh, she's gonna finish out the term.
She's gonna finish out the term.
Do you want to say it again?
Yes.
It's December, right?
December.
End of the year, yeah. I'll go first, yeah, yeah. I'll have it ready for the speaker.
Yeah, sometime, take those, know when you do it.
Exactly.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Okay, uh, second thing is, I got to look into last meeting that we could partner, uh, and make a donation with the one hundred black women for the back to school, uh, supply, uh, thing for August the sixth.
It's appropriation.
It's an appropriation for that. So he did look into that, so that we could. So I'd like to ask that we, uh, make appropriation of three hundred dollars to the one hundred black women.
It is a back to school kind of notice of celebration or whatever, bringing supplies, things like that. Uh, it, the board can do it if they find that this event, uh, it brings in favorable notice of the opportunities, possibilities of the county. So this is something about generating interest in things for the school. So the court, the board could approve it under that appropriation statute. I think, how much did you want to do?
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars? Motion by Secretary of Defense, second, Secretary of Defense, any discussion?
I'm discussing how it is, it is a one time donation.
It's a one time donation.
All in favor?
Let me, I have some discussion on that. I just want to make sure that, uh, by Wednesday, since it's for August the sixth, that we can get it on the docket, or have a small docket for Wednesday where they can receive that check.
They already got the, yeah.
I'll say it, they have not, they have not.
Talk to your, talk to your bookkeeper.
Yeah.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Okay. Excuse me? I'll get you one.
Yeah, six if they'll send it in today, where we can-
Okay, I'll let you see. Next thing is, I have, uh, I talked with, since I'm on the workforce, uh, committee, uh, central, not central, southwest, um, they have a grant. As Sheriff, we want to reach out to her. I don't know if the deadline has expired, but they say they had made contact with Ms. Tawana Wiggman down at, uh, the E D A office. And I made contact with Tawana also last week because I got a call saying that they had not submitted the grant or they have not heard back from them. But this is a career coach grant. And, uh, they have some funding for it.
Where?
Uh, so- Not southwest, this is with workforce and, uh, Jackson. Okay, so, um, I'll give you her information. Her name is, uh, Robin Parker. So I'll let you reach out to her, see if there's any way you can do it. But I know she said that this is, uh, a career coach that the school could have, uh, to house a person there. And they have not heard from the school leader. She just wanted to know what's they gonna partner with them in doing this or not. And, uh, I reached out to Tawana, so she will reach out to the school system, that's Tawana Wiggman. So, uh, that's something you may need to look into too and see if, if anything that they can help you with.
Okay, I have to meet with the student team today.
Okay.
With the student team, so I'll bring you up to that meeting as well.
Okay, because there is a deadline and it is either was Friday or it's gonna be this coming Friday. So I, I'll give you that information. And, um, I just wanted to say, uh, I have my sympathy go out to Mr. Donald Johnson, uh, one of our volunteer firefighters. And, uh, also our coworker, Kevin Wilson. I ask for him.
Mr. President, before you move, Mr. Gaines, I forgot to mention one important thing. Uh, they say the director of U S D A, Ms. Dr. Trina George, supposed to be coming to Adams County on the tenth.
Yes.
Uh, we, we need to get something together that we need to present to her. I'm not, I, I don't think I'm gonna be here, but Sheriff, you probably need to be there because, uh, U S D A have a lot of money. And, and the first thing I asked was, could you get some of that money to build a jail there? So you, you need to talk to, uh, with this board, with, with, with Dr. George personally. Thank you, Sheriff.
When is that email, Secretary of Defense?
August the-
Can't.
August tenth.
You know, I mentioned that to you, Sheriff, that she would be here and that you probably need to be at that meeting because that would be one good thing that you could bring up, uh, see if there was some funding for that jail.
Yeah. Secretary of Defense.
Yeah, uh, well, Sheriff, while we on it, I did, uh, last week, you know, I don't know if you got a call or not, uh, Lemon, uh, Broadmoor, uh, thank Donald and I forgot the first name. But anyway, I, I, you know, I told her, I had a sheriff and I know when, uh, since Bishop Surce has been over to jail and this Nook was over trash pickup, it's a problem going off here in Broadmoor. I mean, we pick it up and I told us on at least two weeks basis that they'll pick them up. But if we pick up trash, y'all pick up trash today, it's dirt again by Friday.
No, 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 no. Same day.
Same day. And so, you know, I've been getting a lot of pushback about this, but I do understand and I want them to understand. I can, we put necessary things in places, but it's the people. Most of the people in their communities is just doing that. But I did want to assure them, let them know that, uh, you'll be picking it up if you will give it, uh, uh, Detective Surce and, uh, well, not Detective.
Yeah, what, what we're doing here, just to, just to show the community. It's, it's, we have, we have a public relations person. So we take pictures before and after, uh, coaching on social media so they know, hey, you been there.
Yeah.
That's about the best we can do, like, just by a spread, say, y'all know, we clean roll up day and day on that E just drag right back up.
But thank God, Project Know-It's gonna help that.
Yes.
Project Know-It's gonna help that because it's tag recognition, face recognition. So, uh, and I appreciate you do that, uh, and back to you, Scott, I gotta go back and, uh, make sure I have another phone call, I think it's four sixty-five Morgantown Road. I want you to write that down, uh.
Four six five minutes.
I mean, I'll give you the exact address and the other one is, I think seventeen Bluegrass.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that was, Mr. Chapman was here about, uh, I had a couple phone calls. I just wanted to let the board move forward. I give you the correct address and I bring it forward, so you can get, do the necessary calling and send the necessary love on the cleanup. And, uh, but I also would like to, and, uh, always give my blessing to anybody who's sick, anybody who has, uh, in bereavement, especially one of our own, Supervisor Wilson and, uh, Fire Fighter. But I would also like to give my blessing to our kids that starting a brand new school year. Uh, not just public school, but private school and everywhere else because our kids are our future. And we have to invest in support in them because that one day, we gonna need them when we get old for to be sitting where we at to make good decisions. So my blessings be up on the, uh, on, on all the publics in private school. And I do want to say this, uh, as a board, I said, we don't have too much more, but for the good of the order, uh, we have worked on a board that everybody thought was gonna be so diverse that we wasn't gonna be able to get things done. And as a whole, we all have different opinions, but we have been working and moving Natchez in a good progress. Uh, lately, we have had a lot of accomplishment, uh, in these two and a half, the three years that, uh, that we've been here. It's been a lot of great things. And I would want to say, uh, and sometimes we ain't gonna never agree on everything. But I appreciate us, uh, stepping up to the plate as a board, doing great things for the citizens of Adams County. And I would, I hope that we can continue to do things. And yes, indeed, I'm gonna be one first. If I don't think it's right, I'm gonna scream. But I still value lunch after, so let's work together and I give you a little.
Have lunch today.
Yes.
Uh, what's two five, two five, Gaines?
Rose ever.
Lemon.
Yes, uh, that was, uh, Sheriff, yes, uh, that, that's the knack. I, I, you know, we talked about it and we had talked about Project Know-It last week and trying to get things together. And I told her, I said, well, you know, I had got so many calls about trash being in Broadmoor. Uh, Nook was, Major Nook was keep up, make sure it's two weeks, he say, keep it on record. So, you know, I was, as a, as your representative, I tried to do my part to make sure it's right. But she just wanted to call you. She said she probably would call you, but if it's not, I just wanted to make you aware. And I wanted to publicly make it aware because, you know, you know how I am. If it fits you, it's great, but if it don't fit you, as long as I can look you in the face and tell you the truth, I'm satisfied.
And I can tell you what we just did, man. We just rerouting him off of the other route he was on and they can hear Broadmoor now.
All right.
So if she come through there in the next thirty minutes, she probably see him by that big up truck.
And I appreciate it.
Mr. Swedber. Uh, yeah, to touch on what Mr. Gaines has said, y'all started this term, just getting thrown in COVID and that was very, very challenging. So to move forward and start getting things accomplished is, I, you know, taking a lot of hard work, so. Uh, I want to give everyone an update and, uh, a request on the mental health, uh, plan that we have submitted. We submitted a draft plan, speaking communication with, uh, the, the mental health czar, uh, that we were waiting on other governmental entities to make a decision. Uh, both Jefferson and Wilkinson agreed to our, the same plan that, that we had. It is trying to start our own region, but also Claiborne County has requested wanting to join in on that region. Um, the, you know, Claiborne County, again, it's, it's, would be contiguous with the rest of us. They're also in the same chancery clerk or court district, so we have the same chancellors, uh, and, and so forth. Um, I think they have a, a similar census that we have in Jefferson, Adams and, and Wilkinson. Um, so I, I don't see any problem with it. It will be additional challenge too, because they're a little bit further up. And we want to make sure people are staying within their community, uh, to get the mental health services. That's the federal requirement and that's, you know, the heart of what we, what we did in our plan. Um, if it's the prerogative of the board, I would, I can amend that to include Claiborne County, uh, within our plan. It probably being a little bit stronger of a, uh, request than three counties adding, adding forth. Um, but it's up to the board if that's what you're, that's what you want to do.
It is, I don't have any problem with this. These ones gonna strengthen our plan. I make a motion that we include Claiborne, Claiborne County in our mental health plan.
Yeah, motion by Secretary of Defense, Gaines.
Second.
Second, Secretary of Defense, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out. Okay. Uh, the state has entered into an agreement for the opioid settlement. It's a seven million dollar deal. I can't tell you how much of this would be ours, but I can tell you we won't get it unless we approve the settlement agreement in release. Uh, the board had obtained a special counsel for that, uh, particular agreement. But this is something, it's a settlement that the state participated in, uh, and they sent this over to me late last week saying that they needed permission to, you know, from the board by August fifth. Um, again, this is, I need to get it approved from the, from the, uh, if we want to join in this settlement.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead with your motion. Go ahead with your motion.
Uh, I wouldn't need a motion.
Go ahead.
I ain't, I ain't trying to make no motion. Um, go ahead and make the motion.
Oh, you say you don't need that?
No, I do need, we do need a motion. Yeah, you need a motion to approve. Got a motion, my Secretary of Defense, can you say it?
You want to?
Is it more part of a class action?
I said it, I said it, I said it.
No, second, my Secretary of Defense, go ahead. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, now, 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 Scott, I know this is short notice, but you know, I do not like approving nothing that I haven't looked over and read because I don't know what's in there that I'm approving. And you know that. At this time, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let it pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any more discussion? Yeah, and I totally know that, totally don't like it. That's why I told you on the front end, they dropped it on me without, not a lot of time.
You read it over, right?
I read over, but-
And you satisfied with it, right?
I'm satisfied with it because we're not suing.
If something happened, then we gonna blame you.
Yeah, we're not suing, we're not, and Ricky, we're not suing Big Pharma, you know, right? We don't have the, so it's, it's just money, manna from heaven, so it's, it's, we do it. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes out. A lot of its attachments that I've already gone through too, so. Yeah, there is. The, I, I'm not sure who gave this to me, but it was in my chair at the beginning of the meeting.
You're not even a raise guy.
And it's a raise for me. This is a letter from the Mississippi Center of Justice to the Adams County Board of Supervisors. And it's from their legal counsel, I guess that's why they put it in my chair. They would like to come to the county and give a educational update, uh, about HUD and fair housing and that kind of thing. Um, they want as many of the county officials as they can to come to what they call the group blueprint update. And then there'll be a general public update as well. to come to what they call the group blueprint update, and then there'll be a general public update as well. They want to do it on August the eleventh uh two thousand twenty-two at six P M. And they would like to do it at the Adams County Safe Room is what they were requesting. So uh I'm assuming that's why they put it in my chair, that they're requesting use the meeting space for that. Um if that's available, you can tell uh Corvette to have it made available and as many of y'all can attend would be would be great.
And does it, but what?
This is uh Mississippi Center for Justice. They try to help. Uh they represent civil rights claims, things of that nature. And what they want to do is educate the public and officials about fair housing uh fair housing educational outreach initiatives, what they call it, about HUD, what your rights as a tenant is, things like are are that kind of thing. I think it's grossly needed because people really aren't sure what their rights are as a tenant and and so forth.
We need.
And pay purchasing houses and so forth. So certainly can't.
Sure.
It's not gonna cost me anything and all of this is space and that's what that community is for if it's open.
Trust me, if if I wasn't gonna be out of town, I'd be there. But I got I got a very important event I gotta do.
Uh if if it probably wouldn't be more than anyway, but it's always as good to have two. If it's not gonna be a regular meeting. But this is one of these where you're not participating in the discussion. You're listening to, you know, uh advice, but you know. So if it's you try to keep it to two, but if it needs to be more, it's not out of realm of possibility.
Well, we got. So what you trying to say is just like when we go to a conference and all of us together, but then you got all of us spread it all over the place and we ain't in our five of us together discussing county business, then we can go to even like this.
That's a similar thing. You're just you're receiving. You're not on, you know, doesn't have supervisor Gray is gonna do this, that or the other. So it's an educational thing. So if more than y'all want to go, certainly, we probably can make it done. We just make sure I tell you not to discuss nails.
I know my president need to be there.
Yeah.
Somebody need to go and give me a report for when I get back.
President.
Possibly, but case of the vice president will.
Okay.
So is that and I'll check with Corvette if it's okay for them to use a safe room.
One of us be there. Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Um last meeting, I sent a draft to handbook policy to discuss reporting of criminal activity. Um that's something that one job I had a chance to review and add any comments to. There certainly already was a comment on the first draft of it. Uh so we updated it. Uh you know, you when you receive a or you see some sort of criminal activity, I think what we have it now. When you have reasonable grounds to believe that there's public funds have been have been stolen, an employee must contact either the sheriff's office or the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation and either the county administrator or the chancellor clerk. Why we had to is because well, if you saw, you know, Shane stick twenty bucks in his pocket, you wouldn't feel good about, you know, uh reporting it on the sheriff's office. You may not. Uh even if you saw uh Brandy Lewis stick twenty bucks in her pocket, then you may not feel comfortable talking about her.
It was Shane.
If I do, y'all get it. But again, it's just a draft. If y'all have other comments or whatever for it, it would certainly can I welcome your input. I didn't I extended it just a month money. It can be extended to all crimes. Be limited however y'all want to do it. It's just a draft.
Yeah, I did read over there. As long as it go, like we said, uh when it comes to one of them, as long as it goes to the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Yes, this is and what this helps the county in that it it defines your scope and and course of employment. Your your duties as an employee is to cooperate with the law enforcement. It's not to be the investigator. And so if you do that, then you are no longer acting within your course and scope of duties. Um and that's something we don't want to encourage. We wanted the sheriffs, the professionals to, you know, get the training and all that to do, to be making, you know, making the decisions, having discretion. And that helped. That's smart just just for its own purpose, but it's also from a liability perspective. They get certain protections that regular uh employees don't get. And so that keeps us protected under under for liability purposes as well. So if that's prerogative of the board, we can enact it.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm gonna recommend that we hold on one more meeting to tell everybody here. I mean, we we just have three people here right now, even though one stepped out. Hopefully, uh Supervisor Wilson will be back. Uh not Wednesday, but for the next board meeting, the third, I mean, the third Monday.
I don't think it's such an epidemic that we can't wait until we have a full board.
Yeah.
And often they contact me and that's my advice anyway. So it's shouldn't wouldn't be that bad if you wanted to hold off everybody.
Yeah, I hope don't let it go down before that.
Um last meeting, we brought up, and it's actually in that packet as well. Back when the county government became a unit system, what was it, eighty eight, ninety-nine? Uh they were supposed to list out the duties and responsibilities of two employees, the county administrator and the county road department. The road uh or the county administrator, when we hired her, uh this was in the advertisement that we that we put out and has been in the advertisement we put out when Joe did it. Um so it basically just cuts in page from statute. That's something that we have to get spread across for minutes. Um but send it to you last meeting. You know, the only thing that we don't have her do that's in the statute that she could do is the uh airport. We have a separate commission that handles all of that. So it's something that the auditor said we have to spread across for minutes. Uh you don't have to spread that particular statute. You can make it less or more or whatever, but most counties just just cut close the statute. I mean, that the board has to approve it. So they don't have to prove what that that statute, but they have to do something.
Yeah, what you recommend us to do?
I would just cut and paste the statute except for subsection K. Angie, is that out there?
Motion, my supervisor Hodges. Can I give you a second? Second, my supervisor Dan. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Um I don't know if anyone said it, although it's already out and about. Um the county set its legislative agenda in May. Our top priority was obtaining that risk mitigation grant, which we expected would take a while. Um if most counties, we were told, don't receive it within the first year. Uh nonetheless, we we got the first that that grant has been awarded to us. Um so we've achieved that legislative agenda. Uh so uh the board needs to, we don't need to have any idle hands when we're paying as much money as we are. Uh we need to give them a new legislative agenda, I think, as opposed to letting them not have agenda fours. And we gave them a list of things, but we had top two targets. Uh the other one is the the liquid loading dock. That we have denoted from that. Um so that's something that, you know, y'all, y'all can.
So we need to come up with a.
We need to come up with and I hate to keep doing this, but it might be something. We talk about it, let it linger maybe on Wednesday or maybe next next meeting, do it unless y'all are ready to, because we just had a fresh meeting. I don't think we need to meet with uh Manning on it again because we just did it, but I think we give them a direction. What do y'all? What's the prerogative of the board?
I think we should be able to come up with something for the next, not Wednesday, but.
About the next week.
But the next week, for sure.
Now, I couldn't find the email where I sent it before, where I had a list of seven or eight things that we could do, or I would have done it. Uh I don't know why. Uh we adopted that ordinance in that right, right, Ronny? The road damaging. Uh that missed property, Angela, they did contact me. They said they they will move the cars. They he was the the problem is the taxpayer for it's a air property and taxpayers in Illinois. And he's getting down, he you know, he said he's contacted. He says he will uh contact him this week to give me a timeline and when to do it. I explained that, look, we're not, we understand it. As long as you're making efforts to do it. Uh you know, we'll 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 be reasonable because we don't want to have to go in there and move a bunch of cars and things like that too. So they been in contact and they want to move it and they were very apologetic about it.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
But remind me if I don't have an update to give next meeting because they should have a timeline by next meeting. Uh Burke Road Bridge, we got an update on that. I got the right of ways, I think, on Thursday. Maybe on Friday. So I'm doing work on that. Uh I have to do the legal work on it. And the real, I think the trip is gonna be United getting the United States to sign up on the right of way. When it came to the state, that took a while. For State Park Road, and that's their access to the to their park. So you know how bureaucracy is on. Um I have passed out a just a draft budget of items for the recreation um that I I think that y'all need to look through. And you know, we need to approve as a board as a whole, this expenditure of the funds. Um the major projects that we have and they're and it's not in super precise language. It uses flexibility of it. Uh but it gives estimates of the various costs of project. Uh we have Chester Willis. We have reserved money for the softball fields, which may not. Yeah, I I I understand supervisor Gray. Scan paperwork is at four sixty-nine. That uh does not include.
And that's for Brandy's?
If for Brandy and for counties, it's it's almost it's split in half. Brandy has some uh work at her particular uh office. It would be getting all those old beads. Hundred percent of them would be be able to search them uh online. It makes your uh title work. Taking a couple hours, probably take fifteen minutes. So it's it's a really good boon for attorneys. I can tell you that much. Um but also if y'all have questions, you can get that stuff out a lot faster and go all the way back to the patent really. So that it's a big deal. But the other thing is the county's records in the Harold Miller Building. Right now, we lease space each month. We'll be able to scan those records in and eliminate uh you know, the that story. It won't have to storm anymore. We'll have them scanned in and saved. And we won't have to pay that lease anymore. So it'll end up being a savings. And this is a estimate. If if there's less records that end up getting scanned in, then it obviously will be cheaper. And I I think that Brandy, you've met with, what is it, Department of Department of Archives and History?
Yes.
So some of those records, we know we might not even have to keep. In which case they wouldn't have to be scanned in. So that's the estimate. Um the justice court, the amount they were asking for was one forty. It's not included in this in this particular amount.
Mr. Uh Mr. President, we need y'all to move this because uh I I evidently I missed that meeting that I was at the table and I was just, so when did y'all even discuss this?
Uh it been had been discussed at the at the board periodically. It has not been determined. That's why I'm bringing this before the board so we can all discuss it as a group.
No, uh Mr. Turner, what I'm saying is I'm familiar with uh Chester Willis field. I'm familiar with what I thought shouldn't be on here is the softball field because we don't even own that and want to spend six hundred thousand dollars. The scanning paperwork, my first time even hearing about that today.
Now, we talked about it. We talked about digitizing documents. Might have been how you heard it.
Well, maybe we didn't talk about how we were gonna pay for it. We did. Well, maybe I was gone. I don't know. I I I I don't remember. But y'all say we talked about it? We talked about it.
Yeah, and and supervisor Gray.
Did y'all bring up a price?
There's been, that's a price. There's not, thi- this has not been approved by the board. That's why we're having this discussion right here now. Not asking you to approve it even now, but this is what we're doing right now is making sure that we do everything as a board and have these discussions in front of the public. The scanning should be a net zero. We should be able to eliminate our lease payments. We don't have to pay them anymore. And then there'll be a chip in, so to speak, from the Chancery Clerk's office to keep this at zero. So it's not an additional cost. Get rid of your lease.
I I I understand all that. I I ain't know how beautiful it gonna be five hundred thousand dollars.
Let me ask a question. The dockets that we're scanning, these scanned dockets, are these board responsibilities of those dockets? Are those all dockets of the board or some of them Chancellor Park, where Chancellor Park will be sharing the costs?
The ones at Harold and Miller are sheriff and circuit. And I I think there may be a few chancery there, but most of that is Eric and Circuit. It's a Harold and Miller.
So are we responsible for all of their dockets?
We're responsible for all of them because we got to provide an office. We got to provide that warehouse space to do it. And this will be, we'll be able to get rid of that that lease.
So what are we gonna do with all the rest of that? It's it's packed over there. Now we just document it.
What's that?
There's some chemicals and stuff over there, I think, but I think that's it.
And like this and it's a whole bunch of stuff from other departments. So what is it gonna do with it?
Well, I mean, why are we, why are we doing?
I think that's how I think that I think that building has become a catch-all.
Huh?
That building has become a catch-all because the county's paying lease on it. All the stuff is just gonna have to be purged, just going to be gone.
Yeah. And we're starting some, probably we're not even know using more.
Yeah, some of it, just some of the, some desks need to go to the don't.
Yeah, I see that's what I'm saying. Why we even storing stuff that shit?
Yeah, they don't work. They don't good.
We can get rid of whatever needs to be got rid of out here. But what we did was when uh Rodney Caden moved into the old bank, they gave us all their metal in wood, shilling, out the bank, we went and broke everything down. We took it down into the Harrowville building. If you go down there now, it's in a vibe that we just did it was because we had everything all on the floor and got it on shelf. Everything's all on shelves now. Now, that's not saying that it still don't need this to happen, but Brandy, you know, me and you've been talking about that. I'm glad that y'all looking at it. But for right now, we we got it a lot of the shaking.
And this company, what they're saying, it's got to go away completely.
It does.
And they, you know, go away the building.
Yeah.
Right.
And this company actually said they could come, they're gonna um the Harold and Miller documents, they're gonna take those to their off-site facility, which will save us money from, you know, having to pay their employees to come, you know, travel here or hotel and all that. And they said they could actually come pick them up in August. So I don't know if Scott was gonna look at the contract about what the terms are as to how we can, you know, what kind of notice we have to give the landlord before we can terminate our agreement or whatever. But they said they could come pick them up in August. So.
Let me ask a question. Uh I ain't know we made it that far. So this five hundred and, I mean, almost five hundred thousand dollars. So we we don't have to bid that out. We just can go find somebody and and pay them five hundred thousand dollars or that much of money. We don't have to have a a a bid process. I'm just asking.
I'll I'll call and confirm. We'll stay out of it. But my understanding is that's the service contract, which we're not, you know, through.
Yeah.
And we actually did it to bits and one, the other one was over doubled.
Yeah, they they did a million dollar on it, so.
Perhaps so, yeah.
They were far less impressive.
Yeah.
And twice as expensive. Okay, yeah, so let's, again, since we're meeting on Wednesday, you know, we can talk about it then if that's the.
Yeah, because, yes, because some of ours was left off or caught the park and the blame, so.
But again, I would say, uh excuse me, uh Mr. President, I just say this again. But a good order, uh when we get pushed in a timely manner, trying to make decisions, we need a barnish uh road. Need a barnish for recreation. These are the things happen, the stones happen when everybody is not at the table on the front end. You know what I'm saying? We it's been discussed back and forth, here and there with one supervisor, with this supervisor, with that supervisor. Everybody discussing individual. If we put it on the table like we doing right now, this will help you do your job. This will help the barnish be going where everybody be on one court. I mean, it's not a bad thing. It don't catapult up, but I would ask from now on, if you possibly can, when we dealing with a barnish, can everybody please come to the table so we can get going? Just like right now, uh what Nambie came down, now he need a list. Know why we can't have another list? Because we working individual, this and that, this and that. Now, when you put it on paper and bring it, everybody not aware of what's going on. Now you need a list for the end of the week. If we can't come up with it Wednesday, now we another two weeks down the road. So I'm gonna be quiet as this and hope I don't have to say it no more. God, help me, don't say it. But everybody be up front, come to the table.
That's that's why it's here because of that, because because of that and voice that concern. I think you're absolutely right. We can do that uh now and in the future. We can do that now and in the future, so.
And be consistent. I say that, be consistent. Whatever we gonna do on one ball, we gonna be consistent with the other. Inconsistency is what we don't need, because inconsistency, inconsistency, if we gonna do priorities on one, we gonna do priorities on the other. If we gonna divide one, we'll divide the other, and we should be doing priority. So that's what we should do, being consistent on these balls.
Yeah. And y'all gave me, here's some things along with the parks. I should have brought them back. And will, from now on, on the front end earlier on, so that's on me, but I'm learning, as always.
Okay.
This actually never got approved on the minutes. Stanley Davis Drive Road was abandoned. There was not a sign posted. We got a road, we got a sign that was posted, and we need to find that the sign was posted, and that eliminates our liability.
Here's a picture.
We already abandoned it. It just never got a sign posted. All abandoned, seems to be treated the same, so.
That's right. Danny motion? Can we get a motion finding that this sign was posted? Supervisor Hutchins, second, Supervisor Dan, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
That, I believe concludes my board.
Ms. Lewis?
Um, I was just gonna, Mr. Grant, I did just hear back from Wayne here, and he said he can look back on that, um, list. He is traveling today, but he said he will look back at that list that we submitted to him to be reassessed, and he would, uh, this week. Um, I have just two items. Um, one is just a board order that we have to do, that the Department of Revenue provides us, says that we have done the publications that we attested to earlier, um, and that we did not receive any objections. And then I have to certify, um, with this order was spread across the minutes. I just need to get a proof to spread this DOR order across the minutes.
You heard the request, clerk. Motion, Supervisor Dan, second, Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
I think I only have one other item. Uh, the rate for mileage, um, has changed if to point six two five, and it's my understanding that we have to have that spread across the minutes um, to not take the change in the rate for mileage.
You heard the request. Oh, whoa. Danny, second, Supervisor Dan, any discussion?
Yeah, what is the rate in mileage?
Point six two five.
Okay. It went from fifty-eight to like six two five?
I think that's right.
All in favor? All opposed? I say.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
The increase of mileage, it works out. We get an increase of severance with gas changing too. So it helps offset that, uh, that additional cost.
Ms. Bayes, you have any? Ms. Page?
Oh, this. Oh, I would like to spread across the minutes, the modification. CCA, they ended up, um, increasing their funds for this, their fiscal year in an amount of four million two hundred twenty-seven thousand one eighteen to COVID costs.
Oh, whoa. Supervisor Dan, second, Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
Okay, I would like to spread across the minutes, the transfer of funds in general, counted to the on different transfers, help COVID costs in an amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
You heard the request, Senator, Supervisor Dan, second, Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
One of these we keep.
Mrs.?
Oh. I would like to also spread across the minutes, the, um, recording reports for the two variable led projects that are submitted.
Oh, whoa. Supervisor Dan, second, Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
This is sitting on my list, uh, the results of the audit. Am I supposed to discuss this?
Uh, we got findings for the audit.
You can leave. You ain't had no.
Passions.
You can't leave, man. You gotta stay.
No, they've been passed.
Okay, so I don't have to discuss this?
Come here.
So you had a drift. I mean, you got finals of the audit, so it is, we already know what the finals is. It's been spread across the minutes, so I mean.
They've been spread across the minutes.
I mean, not spread across the minutes, but it's been notified. We need to make necessary changes, right?
That's right.
Everybody who needs to know is already knowing, not a terrible, terrible thing. So I mean, I'm just fine. Nothing to hide, but I mean, necessary, uh, orders, I mean, this is my opinion that you can move forward. But I mean, how other supervisor feel about it? I mean, what do you think? I mean, I'm gonna ask your legal question. Rob, you the legal man, so what do you think about this? This is my first time dealing with audits.
Well, certain, certain officials need to, or department heads need to respond to their perspective, uh, audit findings. That's nothing unusual. Uh, we've only had one audit since I've been here that, that didn't have any findings. Um, and then the next year, same audit, we made, you know, four audit findings, so it's a little bizarre. Anyway, so, uh, the officials have to give a comment back explaining how we're improving and so forth. I know that there's some additional, uh, changes and help that will be costing more money that one of the officials is gonna need, and he's gonna ask the board to support it. And I think the board will do whatever it needs to do to stay in compliance with state audit, so.
I think so. Have you contacted your necessary people?
I just.
Huh? That's what I'm saying. So, so, I mean, just at least get these people to change and respond before you feel like you need to lay them out. You know what I'm saying? I just feel like, it's just my personal sense. You got everything that at least respond to the people so we can have an honest response. Don't throw people out and you hadn't even, uh, discussed or found out what's going on. I wouldn't like it, so I wouldn't do it to nobody. I'm not gonna say either one of the other supervisors that had to do it. But at least make contact with the people, find the necessary finding, and get a, uh, some kind of correction active plan in place before you throw them out under the bus in the front of the fort, and they can clean it up.
I'm not trying to throw out anyone.
No, I'm not saying you're doing it, but I mean, well, I don't know if you're doing it now, but that's what it is. It'll be discussed. Not saying you doing it, but you asking for the doer. It's being corrected, so I give it to you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Dan, uh, the latest thing, kind of like working, is they go in and find their findings and, and, and do their writing on them, and then they make a recommendation on how to alleviate whatever the problem is. And then it's up to whatever department, uh, that they find the findings on, for them to correct it, uh, issue that they found. Is that not correct?
That's absolutely right, no.
Okay. So we just got this today, and I guess whatever department that, uh, needs some corrections, and then I guess we forward it to them, and they make the necessary correction. And once they make the necessary correction, give them the word.
Some have got on and others have not, and plan on sitting face to face and making sure it's understood and get the comments in, because most of the times, simple stuff that we can do. In fact, we just did one that's, you know, spreading those duties. Didn't take us ten seconds to do, so some of it's just little stuff like that. So, no, I totally agree with you. I did not bring it up, so.
Yeah, I wanna toot my own horn, because our county doesn't have any fines. That's a good thing.
I think I have to shout. I disagree with mine.
Because we ordered.
With mine.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that was you been disagreeing with our money?
Design a fine. Design a fine.
I put it in my email to you, my, my agreement, my disagreement.
The only other, the only thing I want to talk about, which Scott already hit on, was the, uh, Small Communities Air Service Grant that we were granted, awarded on Friday. Uh, special thanks to Senator Wicker and his office, to our lobbyists, to this board, uh, to Richard Nelson, who's done a phenomenal job at that airport, and I'm telling you, he is, he's a gem. He really is. And we got a lot of good employees in this county, and he's one of them. Um, and then also the city for partnering with us to put money up for, bring this to. I've said it since, since I ran for this office, with my background in aviation, I know what we have out there. We have an airport that can benefit this community in many different ways. To get that started is really exciting. And then I would also like to say my condolences to the Brooks family. Uh, Pastor Brooks has been a staple in the province community for a long time, and, uh, our prayers with their family, period, must sound. So we have an item to be determined, but.
Juan, you stole that, uh, literally Bible of, um, come here, wasn't gonna come here.
That I thought?
The Good Lord of Love.
Yeah.
Can I say something for the Good Lord of Love? Uh, I was listening to this preacher, and I think it was T.B. Jakes. He said, "Boppy roads to better times." Not like.
We have an item to be determined. Second, Supervisor Dan, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.